Okay, we're moving on to the learning session. And our first item for that is the long-term facility maintenance 10-year plan. Ms. Hoheizl, Mr. Wilder.
Thank you Chair, members of the school board. We have a handful of documents in front of you and they all relate to some degree. It's just what mile-high view into the -- moving down into the nuances that the document reflects. Based on long-term facility maintenance, every district that receives this money is required to have a 10-year plan. I would say our district is at an advantage because being an alternative facility district, we always had a 10-year plan. And so what we do is sit down, try to identify the projects, certainly the projects within the next couple of years, and then anticipate, can we see those costs going down in any particular area as we move into the full 10-years? The first document that you have in front of you, I'm going to ask you to reference the blue lettering on the upper left that says "Long-Term Facility Maintenance 10-Year Revenue Projection." And what this document reflects, and this is actually the one that our levy gets set by, so what's done in expenditures isn't necessarily what has to be done in revenue. It's just what we're going to collect. And we are going to be -- this will be part of our levy cycle and we will be collecting for fiscal year 2019 -- no, 2018, which is for not the 17, 18 school year, but the 18, 19 school year. So we're one year off as far as when the projects are being done and the revenue we are collecting for it. You can see as you follow through the document what was on our LLC levy limitation and certification report for this past year that we will collect for this coming -- that we will collect for this coming school year. And then our current estimate, which means, you know, we think we're in that range, and then FY '19 and moving forward. Again, this comes down to what dollar amount are we looking to levy? And based on where we were last year to where we are recommending that we be for this levy cycle, it's pretty consistent. We haven't very much, $20,000 to $40,000. There is a projection, you'll see some of that levy actually go down into future years that's projected at this time. And it's just honestly the scope of, you know, maybe our fire marshal projects go down or there's different nuances that happen. But all in all, we kind of hang out around, you know, the $5.5 million to low $6 million mark in a 10-year plan. I'll request that you move on to the next legal size document, which is the expenditure And what this is showing is this is showing 2017, which is where we think we're going to end up at the end of this year, which is done in a week. And the cost of those projects, it's broken down into different categories. You can see how it's identified, physical hazards, other hazards, that's -- those are your health and safety areas, and then deferred capital. As you move down the document, you can see building envelope, electrical, interior services, what have you. We were projecting those projects to be in the $3 million mark when we had started. Right now, we're anticipating expending about $2.7 million. And then as we move into '18, and now remember, '18 is already levy. We did that last year. We're anticipating $5.8 million in expenditures. But again, that work is -- the work isn't done. The collection of the revenue for the particular year is what's -- that decision is made. The work isn't done, but the decision's made.
That amount of money.
Well, again, this is the expenditure side. The revenue is what drives the amount of money. But yes, they're very consistent. So that is what we collected or in the process of collecting for this coming school year. So where it really -- where we really start looking is '19. So this is the levy year. Again, back to we need to be a year ahead of ourselves, even though the document states where are we today, where are we tomorrow, and where are we in the levy year? And you can see our projects are relatively consistent. It may fluctuate in category, but the bottom line kind of holds true. We did provide detail, and this is back now to the individual handouts where you have 2018, '19 year. We have the sum of those projects, and then as you flip the pages, you can see each project that we anticipate doing. I would caution in that, much like a budget, this is our plan. However, should an event take place or something become a quicker priority, that will be put on the list and something might get removed to kind of remain within the $5.8 million budget. In a perfect world, most of these things will get done in the '18, '19 school year. But again, it's more of a budget type of item and we anticipate some changes to the projects that are planned for '18, '19.
Can I just interject for once? Did you just say that, so say to the previous conversation, we run into some stressors, I'll just say financially? So these are types of items that you would potentially consider moving? Is that what you just said? Did I get that right?
That is what I said.
Okay.
So in, for example, and it's a very small dollar amount, but I'll just take -- I'll take the fourth one down. In Ed Anderson Paint Cafeteria. If there was something that we absolutely needed to do before painting, you know, a pipe burst, and you're not -- those aren't going to be equivalent costs, but if there was something that we needed to do to take care of, Paint Cafeteria might get bumped to the next year.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
So that is the plan. Again, I think in -- if you see the total annual 10-year expenditures is $5.7235, that is what we are going to be asking on our levy. There are other levies out there that were -- that you had approved at the last school board meeting, which is Northeast Metro 916. They did this to give us our number. We know that levies is going to be between $20,000 and $21,000, which will get added to our $5.723 for total. But again, we're in the scope of about where we were a year ago for our levy for LTFM. Questions?
I have a couple. Kristen, first, the benefit may be of people listening or maybe, I don't know if Jen's there, it totally makes sense.
You could give a summary of, I mean, I assume it's non-voter-approved levy, correct? And then what can we levy? Is there a cap that we levy at? Or do we just decide what we need done?
Because we are a district that qualified for alternative facilities, we are not imposed by the long-term facility maintenance formula. All districts in the state became eligible for long-term facility maintenance, but they're -- most of those are dictated by a formula and it was the legislative way of kind of, you know, not keeping projections accurate, what have you. But because we were grandfathered, if you will, as a mount facility district, we actually can go to whatever we deem appropriate. We -- I would say my history in this district says we maintain this dollar amount because of the neutrality of the tax impact. So that is why we do what we do. What it can be used for is, with the exception of health and safety, so now you kind of break it down into categories, the deferred capital and maintenance is like-for-like. We can't put something new in. We can replace a furnace. We can't, you know, all of a sudden just do and say, oh, we want to add a wing, or we want to -- if we didn't have turf, we wanted to add turf. You have to do like-for-like. Health and safety is a little different in that you don't, but they have restrictions of their own. For example, fire safety. If the fire marshal were to walk through and say -- incite us for something, that now gives us authority to levy for it. If not, and we just decide to do it, then it's not going to be health and safety eligible. So it depends on the category, but that's kind of how we work through the list.
Question? So I think, I'm trying to follow you as you go on. What you're saying is that past practice, past norm, what we're trying to do is to stay within that relative amount.
That is correct.
And the exception would be if there was some fire hazard or safety issue that emerged? And who knows what that would be or not?
Correct. And, you know, it would be, again, we might have to swap it out. I would say if we know there's a big fire safety, we still try to come up close to the same bottom line, so some other maintenance projects might get pushed aside. Again, because at least in my tenure, the philosophy has been that this would be a neutral item. And we've actually used it as a lever when other items in our levy weren't neutral and reduced what we should be doing. I mean, in all honesty, and I'll speak as a building person, as a facility person here, we were probably not asking for enough to keep up with the repair and maintenance of our building. But it has been at least a decision, my belief of the decision of the school board since I've started, that we have to -- we recognize that, but we're looking at neutrality right now. If I said, are we anywhere near keeping up with our buildings at this point? Now, we need a few more million to that number to truly be on top of it all? Are we able to maintain? Yes. Is it to the peak? No, it's not.
But the correct term is neutrality tax.
Yes.
Which means status quo, basically.
Correct.
So when you make a comment, like, you think we're a little bit below where we might need to be to get the job done? Is that a factor of, you know, when we go to a voter-approved levy that we're not asking for, and are we being too -- I'm just asking, I mean, philosophically, are we being too conservative on our voter-approved levy? And has that gotten us to a point where we're -- I'm just trying to figure this out, to be honest with you.
It would be philosophically, it actually is our non-voter-approved levy, because this is non-voter-approved.
Right, this, I know, but I'm saying, if we levied for more in our voter-approved levies, would we be in a situation with our non-voter-approved levy that we are, where we feel like we need -- we're low and we're constantly, you know, trying to get to a place without the resources? So I'm trying to figure out, are we not going for it when it's time for the voter-approved levy and that's why we're in this spot?
It's entirely possible, because if it was, let's say, a voter-approved levy for a particular dollar amount, and it was like, we believe in this levy, but we don't want it to have an impact, then your other levies are going to get reduced to subsidize.
Yep.
And I think that, if I understand history correctly, I think that's probably what's happened a little bit.
Okay.
I think for me, historically, I've looked at it from being on the board and also a taxpayer, I have felt the desire to try to remain neutral on the taxes. I credit our building staff, our people who work in this, that they're able to maintain the buildings. They come with a very fiscally conservative approach as to what needs to be done. But the bottom line is, you know, to gain the taxpayer's support, we try to come at this from, especially the non-voter-approved, that, you know, we try to maintain the tax neutrality of what we're getting. The bottom line for me is, you know, I'm glad we have this, because it allows us to get top dollar for our buildings when we end up selling them. And so I think ultimately, the taxpayers do benefit from, even though it's not voter-approved, they do benefit in the sense of we're able to get top dollar for our buildings that we may no longer need. And so it's one of those that, you know, is a necessity. But I can tell you, from talking to people, there's a lot on their plate from both municipal taxes and from the school board, that if we can maintain what we've got at a neutral level, I think everybody is happy. And again, this is one of those that if we could set it, and then it can always be reduced, you can't increase it.
That is correct.
Yeah. Just a question. A few years ago, when Ken Horiski was the mayor in Stillwater, I remember him calling and suggesting that things like blacktopping parking lots or snow plowing could possibly be bid together. I don't know if it's even legal, but when I look at, we're going to put $300,000 into blacktopping at Lake Elmo, and it looks like 350 between Lily Lake and Stillwater. That's a lot of money for blacktop. Is there any way to work with a city or another group to do something like that? Is it more hassle than it's worth? Is it illegal?
I'll turn to you, Tony. Go ahead.
I don't know if it's illegal.
It's not illegal. It is not illegal.
It would be, the coordination would be difficult.
Well, that's why you make the big bucks, though. I mean, that's.
That's why we're approving.
I would just like to, you know, know if there's any hope of doing something like that and saving $50,000 out of, you know, we're going to spend $650 on blacktop. Well, if we could get it down to $600, that's a.
It's kind of to the Washington County Rutherford concept, or the Oakland/Washington County. It's can you piggyback projects if you were for efficiencies?
Yeah.
That's what it comes down to.
And I know we have done seal voting in the past.
Yeah. Well, I just throw that out as a, you know, if you.
You know, often.
Why consider it? I mean, and I, it might have been Horiski's, you know, wild thought when he was there, and he's not there anymore, so I don't know if.
The mobilization. So if they are in the neighborhood, then it would totally make sense, but if.
Okay, well, think about it.
Take it under consideration, yes.
And then my other one is, could you explain the auditorium walls that are, have water intrusion at Stillwater Junior High? It's on the second page, about 10 up. Cover exterior auditorium walls.
Oh, got it. The, that is the, where the walls jut up that meet the current roofline. They're ephes, which are basically a, it's a styrofoam and it's like a stucco on the outside of it. And so it's, water will get in there and then it'll get in back of that and.
So is this a replacement? Are we doing it?
It would be just covering it up. It would be covering that up.
Is that done the same time I noticed they're doing the roofstone?
Yes, that would be the same time, so that it all ties in and it makes it really a watertight system. Currently, there's a lot of, that's one of the projects that we pulled off last year.
Oh, okay, good to know.
Yeah.
What is a tuck point west atrium?
Just to take all the cement out of the ground lines of the brick.
Oh, okay.
And then we, and put new.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions on this for now?
So will we be having to vote on this at some point, or is that just a plan?
So to get it on our levy, we need, I will need a resolution by the school board at the July 27th meeting.
Okay.
And with that resolution will be the same, you won't, you know, I wouldn't provide the list. That's for detail. It will be essentially the revenue form, the expenditure form, and a resolution, just saying, this is what you're approving, which shouldn't change from what you're seeing tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, but also, a firm instance, if we had a question.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that is due to the Department of Ed by July 30th. That's why it's in resolution form, because it either needs to be a resolution or minutes.
Okay.
And also, it balances, we have a health and safety program, we're spending money for health and safety.
Yeah.
Right. And how often do we do this?
Annual.
This is every year?
Yes.
So because of that timeline, if you have questions, you want to send it to Tony before, because if they come up and something on the 27th you aren't comfortable with, we have to turn it around by the 30th. So this is, you want to give questions to not wait until the board.
We want to have the final product.
Yeah.
That we're voting on without changes.
So this is just keeping it kind of right where it is every year?
Yes.
So these are your consistent attempts to just keep it right in that lane?
Okay. We start with the bottom number and adjust projects accordingly to kind of maintain.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have the other post-employment benefits, Ms. Hoheizl.
Thank you. So we have discussed a few times now if the board had any interest in doing a levy for OPEB. We talked about use of the trust, use of the general fund, maybe the funding strategy of OPEB currently, and what that can look like as we move into our future to cover the liabilities. I just, it was requested at the last school board meeting that I revisit if the board has interest in doing a levy, to have conversation about that. At one point, I heard that, you know, maybe a million dollars and maybe $500,000. You do have a sheet provided to you that would show the impact. And so I guess I will just open it up to questions at this point.
So just for clarification purposes, this is another non-voter-approved. This would be a non-voter-approved levy. And it would be, the purpose would be for us to pay off the OPEB cost instead of pulling it from our trust?
No, pulling it out of our general fund.
Instead of pulling it from the, well, it could be either, right?
What's trust and general?
Because eventually, the trust is going to be gone.
Right.
And so we either pull it from our general fund to pay those expenses, or we pull it from the trust. Those are the other two options, or we levy for it.
Correct.
Okay. We're currently pulling from the trust and the general fund. And that's what we've been doing for how long?
Since inception.
Since the very beginning?
Since 2008 or 2009, whenever it started.
Okay.
And the annual amount, again, it's by?
Uh, varies. Annual amount for withdrawal of the trust or the general fund?
Overall cost of OPEB each year?
Well, overall cost average?
A few million dollars.
A few million.
Two, give or take.
And have we been taking kind of half and half from each?
No, I want to say we've had years where it's been 1.5, we've had years where it's been 1.2. It's varied. It's never been the full amount. So it just depended on a particular year and budget decisions and conversations at committee level at that time.
So the last year that we know what was taken from the general fund to support?
A year ago, I believe it was $800,000, or we're projected to have it be $800,000.
Kristen, would it be possible to get a past history to say, last few years on that, especially if the board decides it, they want to pursue this?
I have a history.
And I'm not saying I don't need it tonight, but to me, that's kind of a selling point.
Sure. Sure. I do have a history of our withdrawals. We've gone, we went three years of 1.5, we went two years, from the trust, excuse me, three years of 1.5, two years of 1.7, back to 1.5 for another two years, and then in 15, 16, it was 1.2. So we varied as far as the draw, and then just adjust accordingly. It might have been 500, 600,000 on the, you know, assume 2 million and that's the difference. Yeah.
The balance was coming from the general fund.
Correct.
On the visual.
Okay. I'll keep that in mind.
So we've drawn at least a half a million in those years that you just talked about? We've drawn at least a half a million from each of those years from the general fund?
I would say maybe not the 1.7 years. You might, that might have been closer to about $400,000, but you're with, I would say you certainly average more than half a million.
What was the year it's done? 2026, is that right?
The year that, well, it depends on, it depends on.
If we continue on the same.
On the rate of draws, if you were to continue at, if you were to take it all from the trust, let's go, let's start there.
Okay, that's what I was, I was going to add that question, but I.
If you were to take it all from the trust, the trust would expire in '21.
2021?
Yes.
And how long is OPEB expected? How long will that be before we're done with that?
Far past any of us working here.
But it's a decreasing amount, right?
It's a decreasing amount, but you are looking at a liability that's probably another, in some fashion, 30 to 40 years.
Oh, my God.
So we need to figure out how to pay these costs for another 30 to 40 years, even though we do know that the cost will be declining. Eventually, it'll start to decline.
Correct.
Especially after maybe, say, 20 years.
I would say, yes.
But right now, we're still at like two, around 2 million every year.
And then if we, if we were to do a draw of 1.6, an annual draw, that brings us to 22. So that gains us a year by a $400,000 draw difference. And then a 1.2 later draw actually brings the trust to 2026.
Okay. I knew there was a 2026 in there.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
So on that sheet you gave us.
I'll take that one. That's mine. I'll get one. I killed it all somewhere.
On the sheet that you gave us, if the average home property is valued in the neighborhood at $250,000, and if I'm reading this right, a non-voter-approved levy for half a million dollars would increase the taxes on that $250,000 house $13.18.
That's correct.
Am I reading that right?
So can I ask a question? When was the trust established from the beginning of this program?
Inception.
And what was the source of funding for that?
That was a non-voter-approved debt issue. So essentially, we took out a mortgage, we issued a bond, 10-year bond.
So it was a bond, a 10-year bond, okay. And so, and that is, so another option, like what other option would we have? Are there other options other than doing this levy?
We could go for a voter-approved bond.
Do the same thing over again?
Well, no, it would be different. We no longer have the option for a non-voter-approved bond. It would need to be voter-approved.
No, but I'm saying, what we did in the original start of the trust was to go for a voter-approved, was that a voter?
That was a non-voter.
That was a non-voter.
And Kristen, wasn't there special legislation or something at that time that allowed us to do that?
That's why I'm saying it would change.
I'm just saying that very seriously.
Okay, okay. So originally, it was allowed to be a non-voter-approved source of income.
And that changed.
And that's what this would be too. This is what we're talking about doing.
But this is an annual collection. When we issued, we issued.
It was a big chunk.
20 million.
Right.
This is annual.
Okay. And it could go away. We're allowed to do this non-voter-approved levy for, to pay OPEB at this point.
Yes.
But that could change also.
Correct.
And if we did this, how long would it last?
This is, again, this is annual.
Every year.
We have to do it every year.
Is, can I just ask you, the 1.7, was that just a year that we just had excess opportunity? Why, what's that bump?
You mean, why did we draw from the trust at that amount?
Yeah, yeah. Obviously, you weren't here, I don't think. Were you at that time?
You were in budget reduction mode.
Okay, so that's why.
So you were trying to take the pressure off of the general fund and absorb more from the trust.
Because we wanted to fund other programs.
And honestly, I, you know, the reason why, what I know to be true is that the goal was always to make sure the trust lasted as long as the debt. So if the debt was issued in 2008 and it was a 10-year debt, you didn't want the trust to expire before you finished paying that off in '18.
Right.
So that was always, you know, how do we stagger it to make sure the trust at least lasts as long as the debt that funded the trust?
Okay.
And that's '18, or when is that?
Hmm, I'd have to, I'd have to look. It's soon. It's '18 or, it's coming up.
Okay. So you're saying now that way status quo is, we'll make it to '21?
Yes. I'm saying you could, honestly, you could take it all from the trust and you'll make it, you'll make it past when the debt expires.
Okay.
So as I look at this one, is that the trend kind of? Because in 2015, '16, it takes roughly $800,000 in out of the general fund, so that's the trend this is going in if we didn't do anything?
Yes. Right now, in the parameters, or the assumptions, no, excuse me, not parameters, in the assumptions that were provided, we assumed $1 million. So it's actually a little bit lower so that than the, than the general fund would. It was $1 million draw from the trust. So if you said, you know, make that 1.2, then that's a $200,000 savings to what the general fund looks like today.
So if you made a change by going to a non-voter levy, then you really have three columns there, or could have.
You could.
What to be taken from the trust, what to be taken from the general fund, and what would come from that levy?
Yes.
Is there a financial reason why it would be a good idea to let the trust go ahead and just empty out and close it out? Is there a reason why we should try to keep the trust going or the alternative to?
Again, I, there was intent to try to keep the trust going before just because of the debt, like I said. I would say the finance, know if there's a plan. In my professional opinion, as long as there is a plan beyond whatever is going to happen within the next few years, it would, my answer would be based on what that plan or lack of plan would be.
So it's really neither here nor there, whether we're, you have the trust to use.
Well, it is. If you look and say, you know, if you don't have this trust, you're now subsidizing the the general fund by an additional 1.2 or an additional 1.5. That's why you need a plan. Because otherwise, you have an additional general fund deal if you're not going somewhere else with a funding mechanism.
What's the timeline you need us to do something?
So the levy app would actually, again, need, I would have to submit that in July. And you have, the board has the ability to not do it in September or December. That's when your official statements are. But what I submit in July could show up on people's estimated property taxes come, you know, September.
What's the July date? Like, we could decide July 27th, or we would need to meet before that and decide?
I believe the 27th would be sufficient. It'd be tight, but I believe it would be sufficient.
And didn't you tell us before when we were discussing this that you put, you put the number in there and then we have the option up until truth and taxation in December to come back from that? Like, that's the most we could ever levy. So we could put a number in for now and then come back from that and decide, let's not go quite that far. Let's make it smaller. The only problem being if we wait too long, you said it'll show up on people's taxes.
That's correct. Yes, you have the ability to adjust this up until the truth and taxation meeting in December. However, there could be, you know, you could receive feedback from our residents and them not understanding that there's an opportunity to adjust that.
So what do we wish to do? Put this on a July 27th agenda for our action? Make some sense if you have questions before that, come and, or ask you. Anything else?
Yeah, just before you move off, it seems to me there are two potential justification for doing this. One is that it sounds like it's more, you know, like, choose my words carefully, prudent thing to do this way. The second is that you're not tapping as much from the general fund. Would those be accurate statements?
I think the, in my opinion, the prudency would be to keep as much away from the general fund as possible and have an established plan.
Because somewhere otherwise out there, if you don't do this, there's a big question mark.
That's correct. How you get there is your decision, but those would be mine.
That's where I get to the prudent part. You could proceed this way, and some people are very comfortable with that. But someday, you've got to fix the box.
That's right.
Right, I think that's subjective, right? So what one taxpayer might see as prudent, another might say is irresponsible because you haven't made some hard choices and why are you putting this on the taxpayers? So I think it's, it can be subjective.
Okay.
And we would be boarding on it then at the next board meeting?
But knowing that whatever we decide, she can put that in there at that point. And then we could also decide later to cut it back. We could, if we put it up for, we say, let's go ahead and put it in for a million for this year, for this coming year, and we just like decide for whatever reason at a later date before December that that's just not going to work. Or we come up with a different plan or something. We can change it. If we can come down, we can't go up.
Right.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next item, the world's best workforce, Dr. McHale.
All right, Chair, I'm a school board. We're bringing this up tonight, ready to prepare, giving, you put this out in front of you once again as we move closer to your retreat coming up and how this relates to that. So that's why, that's really why it's on here tonight is to, once again, get this document in front of you, keep it out in front of you. And the reason for that is because from the state, so NDE, and I know that we've had some discussions about this, we've had some discussions with parents about this, that, you know, we're academically testing too much and all that. However, the state next year with regard to the ESSA Act, what the world's best workforce is, is Minnesota's way of reporting the ESSA stuff. So it becomes an important document for us to continue to.
Say what you said again, ESSA.
ESSA legislation, so.
Which is federal, but this is state's way of reporting.
Yep, so ESSA requires that the states report to the federal. Minnesota is using the world's best workforce as that reporting document. So why it's important to have this out in front of you continually are for a number of reasons. One is, at the last couple of board meetings, there's been questions that have come up about where's our proficiency? Okay, this is our document that has all that stuff in it. And so it's going to be incumbent upon us to further refine this document, continue to make it look the way we want it to look, which in we, it includes all of you. It's also a big piece from a school board lens in terms of your ability to communicate with the community in a quick, easy format. You know, you can take this to a coffee session and say, okay, here's where we are, here's what we're working on, right? So it has multiple layers to it. And much like I have told our principals, this is an important document, I think, for you as school board members to have, to know, be able to refer to, be able to help us continue to refine what's in it. So that said, that's why I gave this out tonight. This is really what I want to make sure that we talk to, which is the plan. So remember, I gave this to all of you about, I don't know, probably four or five months ago, because this is the first year we've had a world's best workforce plan and not just the world's best workforce report. Okay, so now back to what I originally said. Your retreat's coming up. You have board goals that you need to work on inside, right? We also have this profile, or what we're starting to call Portrait of a Stillwater Graduate that we work on, right? It is in our best interest to have you help us define with your goals and everything, what should be in our world's best workforce plan as we move forward. So that's why I've put these two things out for all of you tonight. Isn't because there's new information. There's no new information in it. It is just, once again, to get it out in front of you, remind you what it is, remind you that we've got the retreat coming up, and it would probably be a good idea to spend some time with it prior to the retreat so that your conversation can be deeper about it once we get to the retreat and talk about, again, goal planning and how do we want to facilitate this continuation of the Portrait of a Stillwater Graduate.
Will the plan be to make a new plan?
The plan is always, so for us, so that's part of the work that my team and I and Chris and everybody have to do every year now is develop this plan.
So you'll be making a new one of these every year?
So we'll be making a new one, but what I, what I think as an administrative team, what we want to make sure of is the plan that we have administratively for the district really should be in alignment with what your board goals are with regard to world's best workforce. Because if it's what our district, under statute, it's really the school board that is reporting the document. So it all should be aligned. And so for those that have been on the board the last three years, it's really been what I've been pushing our team to do is align the world's best workforce with our strategic plan, with our results policies. So once again, it's a, you've got it right here in front of you, and that's why we have Chris, to help us make it look all pretty and nice and usable in a format for everyone.
So this, the creation of this, I understand you're right, is your team, you and your team create this?
Yep.
What part of that process do you want board involvement with? When and how?
So a couple of things, if you look on the inside of this, I would maybe answer that with a question in terms of, as you read through it, what makes sense to you? From a board lens, you know, we've, we've tried to, because we took a first stab on it, even everything from, this is how operationally we view this right now, of how we support the totality of the system in this triangle. Is there something in there from the board's perspective that needs to maybe be in there, that isn't obviously in there? The other thing is, as we move into this next year in strategic planning, page two of this really is, how does the world's best workforce and our Stillwater strategic planning match together? So that right there is a piece of board input. The other part of it, I would suggest, goes back to what I said earlier. Is this a usable document for you to take out to the community, right? Because as we're talking about strategic planning and the world's best workforce plan, this is an opportunity for you to have that back pocket piece of information, right? And if people are, you're meeting with them, if you're out with your community groups, people are going to have more and more questions about world's best workforce as it ramps up in the newspaper, on social media. They're going to be asking you, what is it? Where are we at? How do you measure it? What's our stake in it? That's really, I think, from a school board point of view, what we need to make sure we're giving to you, because this is also what we will be putting in schools and are putting in schools, and it needs to align, right? So.
I think one of the other things, just to add, Sarah and Jen, for you, that, and those of you who've been here before, the, you know, when the results policy started, it really started with the academic achievement piece, but then the board has pushed towards looking more at the whole child. And so when you look at the top of it, the student engagement, having social, emotional, behavior development, benchmarks along the way are a couple of things that have been added, so it's just not all academic. So when you're looking at what we want for students during your retreat, one of the things I'd like to talk about is what Bob has referred to as kind of that portrait of a graduate. What do we think's important for kids? Does this reflect that? Because this, this is your work. So we just wanted you to be able to have what is current and have some time to look and read and think about it, and then decide what you might want to change moving forward, or if it, if it reflects what you want for kids.
So can I just ask a quick question to clarify? Are you saying that those top two categories, student engagement and student social, emotional, and behavior development is something that we added in our district and is not a part of the recording?
Correct. Everything that's in the.
The tan part is required by state.
Required by state, and it's going to be added to.
Which is part of ESSA.
Yep. So the other thing that I would say maybe might be a thing for you as school board members is as you look to the latter half of the plan document, we've listed all, listed and defined what each of the areas are now moving forward that get reported onto the state. And so what I would say is, as you look at what strategies we have listed, if you have questions of, okay, are we with regard, is there something with regard, that's just used gifted and talented program? It's the first one. And you're reading through that, we've listed five strategies there to work towards improving there. This would be something I would suggest as a school board where you might come back and say, okay, as I'm reading through this, I'm thinking about X. Why are we not, is that a strategy? Are we, are we doing something with that? Because we may just not have listed it, and it might be something we are doing that we want to highlight.
So what we.
What I'm suspecting for each of those strategies, the metrics.
Yep, and that's the, that's the piece that we really need to hone in on on our side of the house is, I think, a couple of things. One, what are we going to define as improvement? And then two, what are the metrics we're going to agree upon is going to be used to decide whether we're actually making the improvement?
One of the things, I just throw it out for consideration too, especially when you raise a question of a portrait of our kid. A basic question, it seems to me, could come up, do you have one portrait or many?
That's why we use, that's why we, so you'll hear around the country the word profile of a graduate, and partly what we've had discussion of is that seems very, like, there's just one. And a portrait would be there, each one of us has a different portrait, right? And even difference within that, do you have a silhouette? Do you have an oil painting, water painting? That the language is not just one. But you have to, as a school board, to give us direction, have an idea of what you think is important for kids to have when they leave this institution. So it needs to be arrows moving in the same direction, having some benchmarks, but then flexibility. And I think that's what, you know, a lot of people are concerned about. Well, your idea of what's important for my kid might be very different from what I think. And there needs to be flexibility. So that's where the conversation will start with you as a board, and then we'll be going out to the community and everyone with some of those meetings to give people's input.
So when you, 2016, 2017 strategies to the board have, look at this or have a retreat last year, have a discussion with you and say, these are our strategies, so no. So you're saying, no, and now you want to start pursuing that type of?
Remember the how. So the board is what you want for students. So that, that portrait of a graduate, what? And how much we're going to spend to be able to get there? But that how, the actual specifics of the strategies are really management-type things.
Right. I'm just more trying to figure out what you're looking for with regards to this specifically, like.
I guess I would, I would, maybe I would just back up and generally say, what, what would be most beneficial is just to read through it, digest it, and come with questions about it. And think of it in terms of, again, that coffee talk. Does, in the end, does it give you the ability to have that back pocket talking piece when you're talking with the community?
And this matches up, this matches up with the bridge to X. I mean, because I'm seeing this here, so I like, you know, that's, we need to, we're all over the place. We need to just have the document.
So this is kind of the third year work in progress of making that a lot.
Thank you. That's great.
At the retreat, I know some of these scores aren't going to be back in time to put them down for July 27th. Is that when we're doing it? But are there things that we can include in the 2016, '17 year so that we get a little bit of a handle on how we're doing? And I don't even know which ones we might get back, number of kids that took AP exams or.
I doubt, to be honest, I doubt you'll have much data at all that would be something that we'd be comfortable with putting in there as a reporting mechanism at this point.
What about MCAs?
Those are not made public until August 4th.
Oh, I thought it was July. Isn't that something, we have that, and we should just be able to?
So we can? I just wouldn't want to guarantee that we can get it, we can get it in a form that would pull it all in for purposes of this. Normally, if you remember, what we do is in October, we give you the, this printout with all of the next data in it. And the thing that I would caution is, when we talk about data, if you don't have the whole picture, if you don't have data to triangulate, you're going to, you're going to start looking at data in an isolated way and start to make assumptions based on not having the whole picture. That can be a very dangerous way to start looking at data with a document like this.
I'm just wondering particularly about the two top sections. You know, do we know how many kids participate in an extracurricular? You know, the stuff that, I appreciate all the world's best workforce, frankly, those top two I'm really interested in. And I would like, if there are some numbers that we know are kids participating more? Are we getting less kids failing classes, stuff like that, if that's possible? I'd just like to have it. Now, my second thing is, that portrait of a graduate, it seems to me, I know John's had at least three of those, you know, groups with, with community members. And that would be, I think, beneficial as we talk about it. I mean, there's seven of us and we can go back and forth on what we think. But frankly, when, when you bring in whatever we had at those things, 50 community members talking about, here's what they want, and they don't really talk about FAST or ACT or, you know, I, I think it's important for us to get a sense of, not even the specific things they're saying, but the broad things they're saying, the grit and, you know, the motivation that kids have and stuff like, I mean, that's important to hear from employers when we start putting our own profile of a graduate together.
And I would just jump into the thought exchange that we just wrapped up. That is all on that topic, and we just saw some of the early data. We're getting a little bit more in, and we'll be sharing that with you soon. But it, it gives you, I think, 1,700 people participated in that and are sharing exactly that information.
We'll bring all of it.
That should be available on the 27th.
Yep, we'll bring whatever we do have, we'll bring the thought exchange, we'll bring the profile.
I think the mental health too, after that fabulous meeting that you all led last night. I'm looking at this here, I feel like that this, this area may or may not, hopefully, will expand a little bit, you know, based on what we're going to be tackling. And I'm very excited to see that, so.
Good point.
Bob, do you know if there's been any conversation at the department event just around reframing that achievement gap to opportunity gap? Or do you know of any conversation of those?
It is still listed as. Achievement gap. There has been none. Yeah, I don't...
Okay. No, I was just curious if you had heard any.
No, I haven't.
Okay. Thanks.
I have a question about, can we turn this into the state? Do they require us to turn in, we accomplished it, or just here's our plan?
So, both, and it's actually, as far so, that gets me back to what I started with. Next year still continues to be a transition year. What the state put out for the first time is what they call a reporting data set. So, school districts in the state are divided by zones, we're in zone 11, or regions, region 11, and for each region, they set aside, what they started this last year is, they have set metric goals based on the five areas and some of the data. And so, now, what our work's going to be this year, supposedly July 27th, I think it's the 27th, actually, we're supposed to get the next round. So, we'll actually be able to see in a quantitative set based on what the state recommends, where we sit. And then, what the state is trying to figure out on that is, what's the support for school districts that longitudinally are not meeting those preset goals? So, for the achievement gap, using that. If we're not decreasing the achievement gap by all students or by designated groups of students, the state can come in and say, okay, we're here to provide some support for this because either A, you're not setting your goals correctly, B, you're not aligning your professional development correctly to what you're setting your goals, or C, you don't have intervention set up the right way. And so, that's how the system has been explained, at least that's what my take is from how the system has been explained. So, we'll know more.
So, how about when we have these strategies, will we hear more, like, we did this and here's what happened?
Yep. So, some districts have done that. These plans are all over the board. There are, there are districts that have plans that it looks like this, there are districts that have plans that have a combination, there are districts that do an infographic thing. I would suggest that, yes, moving forward, we're going to be in a spot where, now that we have a plan and a layout in place, that was really our goal this year, is now, okay, here were our strategies, here's the metrics behind the strategies for 16, '17, therefore, here are our strategies for '17.
It seems to me, and I don't think it's likely, I mean, I think this is important stuff to do, to expect that the state's going to come in and do that kind of supervisory role, et cetera. We've taken an awful lot more resources than what they have. So, I mean, they, I think that's why, even when I've heard Basilias talk about this, I don't think they're really visualizing themselves as the overseers. I mean, that's where it ends up, but in terms of playing a strong, active role, I'm saying, you're talking big bucks to have the resources to do that.
And I think the way we're viewing it isn't, it really is more of, here's an opportunity for us to align...
Yes.
Goals, metrics, strategies, beliefs, our strategic plan, everything, so that we continue to get a better alignment, so that we get more kids learning more, so that we get more kids growing more. It's an opportunity for us just to make it more obvious what it is we're doing, how well we're doing it, and whether, whether or not what we're doing is actually having the impact we think it's supposed to.
And I think that's really the spirit of the legislation behind this.
I think it is, too. And that's the angle we're taking it, so we're...
And that's why this, I'm going to keep...
That's why we have that.
That's why this, this is your job, right? This is the policy, so we need to make sure that this reflects your values, what you think's important, because what we, when we look at resources, it needs to be aligned around this work. So, let's just say, you, in one of the goals, when you look at the, read well by third grade, and you say, you know, we want every kid reading and loving, reading by third grade, then what resources do we put in place at the primary schools up to third grade to make sure that that's happening? You know, that's how strategically I'll allocate resources around World's Best Workforce.
I have so many questions, I'm sorry. This on the side here, so, June 2017, so, do you, how does that, does the report...
What do you have in that?
Oh, sorry. Sorry about that, Bob. Yeah, just on the smart goals. How does that reporting come, come out? Is that something like, here's what we had as a SMART goal, and we met it or we didn't meet it, or how does that typically work?
So, what happens is, I don't remember what the date is, if it's October 1st or mid-October, that we have to submit, then there, what, whether, there's a small report that you submit to the state that says, here's what our goals were, here's what we came in at, here's what our goals are, and what the state did for the first time this last year is sent us back a report that said, okay, because the focus really was more on the plan, not on whether you did or didn't make your goals. They're trying to get districts to do stuff a similar rate. So, create a good SMART goal, create strategies that mimic, or that support the SMART goal, and then report data. That makes sense for that. And so, I would suggest this year, we'll probably get a little bit better feedback from that, and for the most part, we have, we have it all taken care of because we already laid out this way. So, basically, I pull right from this and insert into the report.
Okay.
It's that whole systems thing, right?
So, how much of this document is, do we have flexibility with design? And, I mean, a lot of the Bridge to Excellence stuff is on here, so, I mean, when that ends, we ostensibly will have a new plan, probably with a new awesome name, and, you know, we'll put that in there, but how much of this is required by law, in this format?
The only, there isn't anything in this, this is still our...
Okay. It's just the information...
So, what we did is, we took all the information, and Chris and I sat down and said, what can we fit and how can we fit it, because here's what we think we need to have. Because the first year of this wasn't on the back, there was some, I can't remember what was on the back. There were a couple of columns in here, the strategic plan wasn't a part of this.
So, I guess what I'm trying to ask you to be more specific is, what is required? What are we actually required to report to the state?
We're required to report...
We're required to have this plan?
We're required to put a plan together, and we're required to report, create goals and report on these five areas.
Okay.
The tan. We're not required to have all this data, we're just required every year to report the SMART goal and the achievement level.
Okay.
That's what's in the report.
Okay.
Everything else that goes with World's Best Workforce is simply required that we post it, that we report it at a meeting, and that we post it on our website. So, if you go to our website, you'll see these things living here, and you'll now see the longitudinal 14, 15, 15, 16, 16, 17, World's Best Workforce.
So, they're obviously saying, at the state level, that it's really important that people in the community, parents, staff, stakeholders, really know this information, so they know, out in our community, how well we're doing. We all know, everybody knows, right?
And that's why I say we're trying to create the backpocket talking points for you.
That's awesome. I have one other quick question. It says here, there's a World's Best Workforce Committee.
Yep.
Are these people all still active? Is this still up to date, or will this completely change this year?
So, this is a 15, 16, because remember, the report is always an autopsy report.
This is like two years ago.
Yep.
So, then, how often does it change, and how often does this meet?
This meets once a month.
Okay.
And it is part of what we've done, because it's closely related to curriculum, is it's actually the same group that meets as our Curriculum Advisory Council, and what we do for purposes of planning is the first and possibly second meeting of the school year, focuses only on World's Best Workforce, and the last meeting of the school year focuses on World's Best Workforce, the rest of the meetings focus, there is no requirement of amount of time, but I can tell you what we did do this last year, is we added students to this committee, and we added, we added more representative community members on the committee as well. So, we've got all grade levels covered, we've got gender covered, we've got students covered, we've got a variety of our community members from different parts of our district in this as well.
Okay.
So, trying to make it more representative.
When, if we ever wanted to revisit, maybe we wanted to add or modify some of the, I guess, measures, if you will, for the, the top two, like student engagement, is that something we do at a retreat or learning session?
Yeah, sort of a retreat.
I was just curious, I'm thinking of, you know, some of the things that the middle schools and high schools will be doing with web, and is it link? And some of those things that, I think, are...
Exactly, that the community would want to know.
So, I think the way to, yeah, and I think the way to think about that is, coming to us with, we'd like to know about X, and then have us figure out as a team, all right, this is what the school board wants to get a report on, and then we can kind of figure out, what's the best way for us to get that data, come back to you and say, okay, here's what we can come up with for this, is that what you really want? I do think that you really have to start, we really need to start with the portrait profile, whatever, revisit that, because that will then dictate whether or not this is capturing what you wanted to capture for a pre-K 21 experience for kids in St. Louis, and define again what that looks like.
All righty. Let's go on to calendar adjustment for 2018.
All right. Part number two, try to make this quick for you. You have a calendar in front of you. You approved this calendar earlier in the school year. There are two dates, I'm going to draw your attention to, January 29th on the left-hand side of the calendar, it's in blue right now, and the sec, so if you mark that one, and the second one is May 14th, it is white, it has no color in it. So, here's what's changed in our current calendar, or I'm sorry, May, May 14th, did I say March? Oh, I said, okay, May 14th. In the currently approved calendar, May 14th is set aside as a professional development day. What we've learned, because of how the days work, is AP testing is going on, and it tests through the second full week of May. The 14th is now designated as an AP testing day. That impacts kids, because if we don't have school, we don't have transportation. So, hold that thought then. The second thing that came up in the spring that we, or right, right before we ended the school year, was January 29th, we host the SEC Music Festival. What didn't get a, to be a part of the conversation was that when we host the SEC Music Festival, we cannot have school going on in the high school, because they need the totality of the building to run that, because they do all their individuals, their ensemble. So, what we're proposing is a flip-flop of days, where we would take January 29th, make that the professional development day, because we need the building anyway, and we can work around that, and then have May 14th be a regular school day. It helps us with AP testing. So, the, what we're going to, what I'll be coming to you with as a, something to approve for our meet, our next board meeting, is simply the flip-flop of those two days. So, the change in the calendar would be January 29th would be a professional development day, no school, and May 14th would be a regular school day.
And that doesn't impact the quarter, so there would be one more day on the first three, and one less than quarter four, does that matter?
It will, but at this point, we were looking for the easiest solution that impacts the least, and messing with the calendar is just such a big deal anyway, that this doesn't, this solves the, this solves both problems, makes it easier for staff and kids and parents, and it, other than that, adding a day, subtracting a day, it doesn't impact anyone negatively.
I think it makes a lot of sense, because you're putting your professional development days early, when people can take advantage of that, then let's say they hear something fantastic that they want to implement, now they've got four months instead of two weeks.
Yep. So...
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I'm very familiar with the SEC Music Festival, it's a huge, wonderful thing, it's very exciting that we're going to be hosting that, so I think it's really smart of you to be able to find, find this and flip-flop it. I, my question is just only, and it's really only because I feel like I, there was some confusion with the whole last day of school closing, and if teachers supported it or not, and I feel like after the fact, we thought we're doing the right thing, and then we hear some complaints, so I guess I'm wondering, I don't want that to happen, so I'm assuming that you have talked to staff and they, or not, or you don't, or is this something that the teachers will come back and say, we have issues with? I'm just asking, like, how that, how that goes.
So, here's what, here's the way I would answer that, would be, the only other option is, you would then, on January 29th, you'd have school in the district, except for the high school, so those kids would be off, and everybody else would come to school. And then, in May, we're going to have a transportation issue, because we're going to have kids that need to be transported to take those AP tests, and we're not going to have school. So, in this situation, I'm, I guess I'm not convinced that, other than letting people know that this is what we're doing, a discussion is really more about what's in the best interest of the, of the district to function, the way we need it to function, and it is...
I think, you know, I appreciate you sharing that, and I think what I shared with that whole, the last day of school and moving that for a movie meeting, and Josiah, I'd invite you to jump in here if you want to, but we had lots of discussions starting, I don't know, back in November, December, about can we get this done so that we can have staff have an extra day? So, you know, we're never going to make a decision around this table that we're going to have 100% people supportive of, but I would have to say, from my position, I got a lot of people who were appreciative of that, and I, I felt like that was the same ask.
My consistent, personally, my experience was consistent with that, that the day was very much appreciated. There were a few communications I received that, due to the high level of emotion around some of the transitions being in place, that it was hard to say goodbye to the students sooner than they would have liked to, but as far as the amount of work to be done, the amount of effort that goes into packing up a teaching and learning space, my experience was that that, that day was very well received.
That they were appreciative of it?
Correct.
Okay. That's good, because I feel like that's why I voted that way, and so I was surprised to hear the, some of the comments after the fact, so thank you for saying that, I appreciate that.
But I think, I mean, back in this June, and we're making this decision, I mean, that just gives...
One more time.
I think it's pretty tiny.
Well, we're not decreasing total student, teacher, classroom time, we're just switching days, right? So, that's...
Great. Yeah.
You're going to bring that then on the 27th.
27th, because Chris needs to get it into our calendar.
All righty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is discipline policy first reading.
All right. So, this is a short one. So, what you have in front of you, Chair Hetner and School Board, is really three documents, and I think what we'll do is, I'm going to give you an overview of what you're looking at first, and then we'll work backwards to hopefully help simplify what you're looking at, because at first glance, it's a lot of pages to see. So, you have in front of you a document that says, Discipline Policy SR 120, and it has red spots on it, okay? This is the old policy, so it's the policy that's currently in session. You then have a copy that looks exactly like that, but it does not have any red on the front page. That's the proposed policy, and we'll talk about why you have both of those in a second. Then, the third thing you have is you have what we're calling administrative procedures that looks like this, all right? So, you've got three documents. So, hold on to administrative procedures. I just ask, don't get ahead of me in administrative procedures, or we're going to go back and forth and confuse one another with what we're talking about. So, the discipline policy that we're, we're looking at, we have discovered that because of Chapter 121A, which is state statute, this big, what's in it, and because of the Fair People Dismissal Act, so for those people that don't know, because you haven't had to have this come home with you, the Fair People Dismissal Act is Minnesota's suspension, exclusion, and expulsion guidelines. It drives the process we are mandated to follow when we expel, exclude, or suspend a student out of school. So, this document and the entire chapter on student discipline and student responsibilities drives what needs to be in a discipline policy for a school district. What we discovered in some incidents last year was that our school district policy left openings for us to maybe not be in compliance, if we didn't catch them on our own, but rather just the way that it was written. And so, what we did is, we went to MSBA, because this is a statutory requirement, and the process has been with our statutory policies, we're going to start with MSBA. We also then looked at several other district policies for verbiage, how did the district specifically word this, that, and the other thing? specifically word this, that, and the other thing? We took that together, we put a draft together, and we had a committee of 12 members. So we had three parents, we had a student, three teachers, three administrators, and two district administrators on this committee, and we walked through the first draft line by line, and we walked through this, what we'll walk through later, this matrix, line by line, to get an idea of what do people like, what don't they like, here's what's changed, here's what's happened. That then went back to Kathy and me. Kathy did some work on that, and then we gave it to Legal, because we didn't want to go any farther than that with the discipline policy until we knew that Legal had a chance to review it and made some tweaks to it, which they did, which is why Kathy had given you this earlier this week, we got it back from Legal, and then in addition to that, we were able to meet as the Policy Review Committee. So we walked through this policy with the Policy Review Committee, and the recommendation was, now back to why you have three documents, was to come tonight with a document that shows in red what stuff is in this new policy and where does it live? Because what you're going to find is that pretty much everything that's in the old policy is in the new policy, and that there are some additions. So for example, the general, if you look at the old one, the general statement of policy, it says new numbers one through six. What you see is different is the layout, rather than being a paragraph form, it's now listed one through six for ease of reading so that it's a step-by-step. Areas of responsibility, it still has areas of responsibility, they're covered in 8-1, 8-2, and if you go through the document, it's all in there that way. Some things that we've switched around, we've put on the bottom of the new policy, we've put definitions in there right away, which are consistent with the legal definitions. And then what we've done is gone through and in areas of responsibilities, if you turn to page four, we have expanded the section on student rights and responsibilities. It used to be this little paragraph in the old one, and now it lists them out and gets us into really what are the behaviors we're after in a discipline policy. You'll notice on page five that the areas that start to get listed have no definitions by them, which is why we gave you the matrix tonight. On the matrix, everything is listed, so if you look at on page five, abuse, abuse is the first one on the matrix, but it has the definition. So that's why you have this, is so that if you have questions about what's this defined as, here's what it is. One question that may come up is why, why this? Well, the other thing that we noticed in our discipline work is that on the reporting side, we haven't been reporting consistently. We've, and, and what I mean by that is, we're required every year to make reports to the Office of Civil Rights, we're required to make reports, other reports federally, and we're required to make what's called a DIRZ report, so a discipline incident reporting system for the state of Minnesota. All of the stuff, when, all of the behaviors when they happen in a building are theoretically going into our Skyward, our student information system, and getting reported as an event of some kind, so pushing, shoving, having a lighter, all that kind of stuff. What we've found is that what we were reporting them as in Skyward sometimes matched and sometimes didn't match what you reported as in DIRZ or to, to the Office of Civil Rights. And so what we attempted to do, and why this list is longer, is we now, we took the, I had John take the Office of Civil Rights titles of offenses, the DIRZ titles of offenses, and offenses that we know we use a lot, and cross-reference all of them, and match them up with what other districts are using as well, and get everything to match. So for example, if I'm a student and I have a misbehavior of 10.4.1, which is abuse verbal written or otherwise expressed, that's the infraction, whatever I did to get that. The principal now, or the administrator puts that into Skyward, is that that will now match what is expected to be reported as that when we go to report it outside of Stillwater's group. What that did is that made our list a little bit longer, but on the matrix side, it creates a consistency for our administrators. So now when an administrator is dealing with something and they're going to define it as abuse, it's the same if I call it that, it's the same if Krista does, it's the same as if Denise does. So that's why the long list, and I just want to make sure that as you read through the comparison, you're going, why so many more? Well, this is why, if there's anything new, we already deal with it, it's just, this is how we need to label it.
Before you go on, is in Skyward, is it viewable for parents to see if they're?
Only if your student has gotten in trouble and it has been called an offense.
Okay, I didn't even know it was on there, which is good.
So yes, so in Sky, the way our system works, as a tangent, the way that our system works is if, if I get in trouble for swearing in class and I get sent to the office, and typically a teacher will write that up as a referral, again, that's the title of it in Skyward, and that's where it lives. The administrator responsible for that student will get an email that says, Bob McDowell has a referral in the system. That notifies the administrator that they need to deal with me, so they can do a number of things. They can talk to me, they can do whatever they need to. If the administrator decides that this is your 28th time of swearing in so-and-so's class and we need to do something about it, they can shift it to what's called an offense, and then the offense allows you to assign a consequence to it. Now all of that lives behind the scenes, and then Shelley, if that were the case, you would get an email as a parent, if you have notifications turned on, that says, Bob had an offense at school today, much like attendance, and then you would be able to see it. If your kids haven't had that happen to them, you won't. However, this is the other part why we're doing the matrix, and you'll see in the matrix that I get to in a little bit, our reporting systems at our elementary schools are less consistent than at our secondary schools. So we're trying to create a system that allows for that consistency as well.
Just a side note on that, I have heard, that's part of the reason I asked, because I have heard quite a bit from elementary school that parents won't know that something happened either to their child or that their child's done something, so just that they want to know so they can support that at home and haven't always known.
Yep.
But can you, that was a really good discussion, Jen, here. Can you talk about, because that came up about some privacy laws that we wouldn't always know, and we don't legally don't get to know.
So let me ask that, so if my child is harmed, I can't know about it, or I just can't know who harmed my child?
You, so multiple layers to that question. What I can, well, I would put it this way, here's what I would expect depending, if your child was harmed, I would expect that you get a phone call about your child being harmed. Now, there's even layers to that of defining what harm is, right? So if, if I push Kathy down on the, on the playground and she skins her knee, that, depending upon what it is, you might not get a phone call about that, that's probably a fair statement. If, if something more severe happens, you're probably going to get a phone call about that, because Kathy's going to end up in the nurse's office, and there's going to be a whole sequence of events. It also depends at the elementary level when and where it happens, is it something that takes place just in the classroom, and how is this, how has the teacher chosen to deal with that? Because if the teacher, if something happens in the classroom and the teacher doesn't inform the office, then the office doesn't know to call you. So that's kind of a tangential thing that we're working on at Lake Elmo and with a smaller team in administrative, on the administrative procedure side. And so that would, that's a great question to kind of segue into, you have the policy, and so the board approves the policy, and that's why we have this document now of administrative procedures, is it's really our work now to get the clarity of the policy for you to approve that. Administrative procedures go right along with it, and for us to work with principals and buildings to ensure that we've got consistency in how we're dealing with situations, to include notifying parents, following up, and all that kind of stuff.
Real quick on that before we get going, when Paul, so we, in our lengthy discussion on Monday, part of what came up also was a couple of personal examples of people that I heard, you know, and parents feeling like they didn't get any answer back, you know, they didn't know what the end-all, end game was after whatever happened to their child. And Bob explained to us that that's the law, that you can't, they cannot divulge, that's a privacy concern. My only thought, question for consideration is, I, I feel, I feel that a lot of people don't really know that. I wonder if there's some way we can spell that out to families, I don't know, I hear that a lot, we have no idea that what happened, you know?
Consequences.
Yeah, and, and is there, right, and maybe is there any way to say, you know, by law we're not allowed, I don't, I don't know.
We do do that. My experience as a principal is you do that, my experience with our principals is they do that. I don't think it necessarily eases the sting of hearing that when you hear it. Parents want to know, they, you know, part of, I think part of, part of being a parent when you're not involved in the system and this happens, is a, is an expectation that it's been handled, right? And, and the lack of information only makes that harder, but it is, it's part of private data.
Like if we put something on the website of here's our discipline policy, and, and what if we could say it by state law, I, I don't, I'm just throwing it out there.
So that's covered in policy, that's in here?
This kind of relates to a question I was going to ask, is what is, how does this document interface with like our student handbook and what information would actually get out to families? And could there be a statement like you're describing, Jen, in the policy, in the student handbook, that kind of clarifies that where the line is where privacy, you know, to clarify this issue?
And what can you say? You can't say we are, please know we're being serious, we just maybe have a declarative statement of some sort.
And actually, so then the other question would be what part of this does mean, this is a policy, it's available on the website once it gets approved and all of that, but in terms of normal, sort of more common everyday use, people refer to the student handbook. So not all of this is going to go in there, right? I mean, this is kind of unhealed.
That comes here.
Okay.
So what some districts have done is gone and just put their administrative procedures in their, as part of their student handbook, and where that relates to, and Krista's taken notes, what we're working on right now with our student handbooks is to go to a totally electronic version on the website that is the same for every building, so that again, with this consistency, we're not quite there yet at the elementary school, because we've got some elementary schools that do some stuff a little bit different, but, but we're getting closer to, and this would be a perfect piece to put in there, is if you have questions about discipline policy and how it's handled, and the way Krista has the demo site set up right now, you'd click on, for example, elementary discipline procedures. You could click on it and it will open it up to whatever we'd want to have.
You typically have that short summary, just kind of explaining what it is, then you can link directly to the policy, you can link directly to the procedures, so it'll make it a lot easier, you can skim it and see kind of what it's about, and then if you want more info, you can dig deeper into it.
Makes sense.
So are you going to do it, or what?
Or what?
So I know, I was just asking if, does that make sense, what I, what, where I was at?
We have done several communications to parents after, you know, if there's an incident, there's usually something that we write that says basically what you, you mentioned earlier, is that due to data privacy laws, we can't share the consequences, but, you know, there's something in there about we're following our, our policy.
And, and I can.
So we can use a statement like that on the website, too.
I can tell you that, I would say with 99.9% certainty, our principals, when they're dealing with the situation, are telling the family exactly that. But again, in the heat of that situation, that is not at all what the receiving family wants to hear. You know, they're.
They don't want to hear.
It's an emotional time, especially with some of the bigger incidents.
Yeah, thank you.
So do you want some feedback on what we think about this document right now, or do you not really want that right now? Or if we do have some suggestions, what would, how would you like us to share that with either one of you, or?
Archie, you're just going to go for it, aren't you?
Or, I mean, like.
As far as.
We're going to vote on this eventually.
Yep, the idea would be that we would bring this in July.
Okay.
To vote on it, to put it into policy.
But so I'm just saying, like, do you want feedback from us? Like, I think this one is repetitive, can we take it out, that kind of thing?
If you have things you know tonight, yes, because the more that you can tell us tonight, the more we can get it updated.
Yep, all right.
And then if there's other things you have between now and we bring it to the board, get those to us so that we can, we're going to come back.
Who's the primary again?
So Kathy, Kathy is managing the way it's laid out in policy.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so Sarah, just for clarification, what I would see is we'll take information from tonight, we'll take information that you guys send us in the next week or two, whatever that is, come back to the committee with the policy, the policy working group with the changes that we have, so that there's a revised version that comes to you for approval next time that's already taken all that into consideration. And we will likely have another legal review before it gets approved.
Okay, good, so if we do, something else does come up after we've all had some time to take a look at this and really dig into it more.
Yes.
Then we would have time to continue.
Yep, and so just from a timeline standpoint, my goal is to have it done before we start the school year.
Okay.
Is really what I'm after, because what I'm working on, and we'll get to it, what I'm working on with principals this summer, is really getting this done so that principals have this in the, the administrative procedures part of it. Not that, this won't change a lot from that, but.
So do you already use a document kind of like this, a system like this, or is this totally new?
It's totally new from a system-wide lens. We have some principals that are using some version of something.
They had to have something to use to record incidents, right?
Well, we use, we don't record on that, we record in student, in Skyward.
Oh, so there isn't like a?
There's not a matrix currently that's used system-wide.
And is this going to be in digital format for people, or are they going to actually have paper?
That'll be, that'll be attached to, on the website as part of it, but it'll.
For people to see, but those categories will be built into Skyward.
Oh, yeah, yep, that's the plan.
So it'll be.
Yep, so when I get to that part, I'll explain how that works.
Okay, sorry, didn't mean to get ahead of you.
That's okay.
Did you ask us not to?
Add one more thing to the timeline piece.
Yeah.
Because we're working on the student handbook, we do require parents to sign off that they've looked through the handbook, and that information starts to go out to them right away before back to school time, so ideally, if things can be approved by July at that meeting.
Good point, I forgot about that.
That gives us time to get the handbook together, so it's in parents' hands, or that they have access to it as they're coming back to, back to school events in mid-August. So ideally, it would be approved at the July meeting so that we can get that piece done to parents.
Can I just take some to you back?
Well, I suppose legally you have to have these things in place before school starts.
Yep.
You can't have it.
Otherwise, if you have an.
Because I always felt so overwhelmed with so many different things you have to do at the beginning of the year, if there's anything, just completely almost unrelated, I guess, is push it off a little bit, a couple of weeks out, maybe we'd get better compliance, but.
The hard part about it is that if we have a significant situation that happens even on day one, and we don't have that signed off, that people have at least had the opportunity to read it and go through it, we can't hold them accountable for that behavior.
And does the high school, they require them to have completed some of their stuff before they'll give schedules and stuff, right?
They have in the past, they've had to sign off.
They've got to get this sorted.
So if we can get it done by July to that point, that would be great.
So it seems like this has all been kind of created from the perspective of attempting to, as you really carefully laid out, align all the different kind of reporting and make it everything sort of streamlined so it's easier for administration to kind of keep track of these things. Would you say that's accurate?
I would say.
And more accurate, so we don't have mistakes and whatever.
So I would say partially, I would say the administrative procedures is laid out from that last.
Okay.
Not, not the policy.
Listing out the actual descriptive words that say the different behaviors and things.
The only reason that we did it that way is so that this document wasn't 37 pages long, and we just referenced this one that has all of them in it. If we were going to, because the other part is, if you were going to go through this with kids and families, once we get what the consequences are in first, second, third, fourth offense, this is a perfect document for parents and kids to have, because they can see, if I do X, I can expect this to happen the first time. If I repeat that the second time, I can expect this, if I do it a fourth, so again, once we get to this, I can explain kind of how that whole process works.
Okay.
And Sarah, and Jen, we talked about this in the policy, just to give you context from a historical perspective, the discipline policy gets reviewed every year, and over the several years, George will know, we've done this discipline policy, there's different administrators who have taken kind of charge of bringing it. So if you think about, we started with a discipline policy, every year someone was in charge of it, whatever their perspective of that policy was, tweaks got made to this policy in definitions, or we don't like this word, it should say guardian versus parents' guardian, or all of those changes, so it got shifted every year and tweaked it. So this takes us back to a clean base, what's required by MSBA, consistent language across MSBA and of, in some cases, other districts' language.
And that's what I would point out with, what I, and what I had said at the, our policy working. And that's what I would point out with, what I, and what I had said at the, our policy working group is, the discipline policy itself is one of those policies where it needs to be legally right. That's, at the bottom, it just needs to be, right? It is not about expounding upon philosophy, or this is about if we have a situation, what's the least amount of risk we have because we've let everybody know we're doing stuff the right way, or legally correctly.
I guess I was coming at it from a question of, of a little bit of a philosophical approach to, like, when does the conversation happen around what consequences should be? For example, I, I don't see anything in here written about like restorative justice. Does that exist somewhere else? Is that something we do or we don't do? I mean, you know?
So, yes, and that is on, actually, that is the next page, on page eight. You'll see that what, well, actually it starts on page seven, disciplinary options.
Okay.
Okay, so the first couple of sections there, eleven one, eleven two, eleven three, are all of kind of the generic statements of, we're going to have consequences, but we have the discretion to implement consequences based on context, based on all of the, all the stuff. Yeah, flexibility. However, then when you get to page eight, what you'll see are a list of kind of the generic, here are options a district has for discipline. The, the piece however, Sarah, that I would, way I would answer that is, that when we're talking about how we're going to deal with students, that is a management piece. That's a part, because what, because what ends up happening is that we're, we need to be worried about the developmental level of the students. We need to be worried about how trained our staff are in being able to pull it off in a manner that works and is successful. However, to your point specifically, that is why we've added thirteen, or eleven, three, sixteen, where it says, it's listed as the, what has been our YCAP program, and alternative to suspension. So what we've done at this point is left it fairly generically open. What I can tell you is, for the upcoming year, we're moving the YCAP program to the Oak Park Building. And part of what we're redesigning in that is a restitution type process. So when we have that going on, where we have students that need to have that, that type of a consequence, there's a restitution piece to it. I can also tell you, again, when I get to the matrix, I can talk a little bit more about where restitution lives in that and how we go, how we're going about deciding on those factors.
I was just going to ask, maybe could we just go at it in your, in the process you wanted to, just maybe start to finish? And that way we don't get, we're not jockeying all over, or were you planning to do that, or were you?
I was just planning to continue to go on and explain where changes were in the policy.
Okay, I didn't know what you were, I just didn't want to get all mixed up and jumbled up with work.
I think that's the hard part about discipline policy again, is to remember that you could probably, if you wanted to make it a philosophical discussion, you could probably spend days and days on it, right? But then when it comes down to it, Tom is, is legal, correct me if I'm wrong, but your discipline policy is one of those policies where you just need it to be accurate and legally acceptable.
I agree with that, and I think that this is where it would be really helpful if we had an equity vision so we could look at this through an equity filter. Just because I, we were recently at a Equity Alliance Minnesota Collaborative District Meeting, and it was at Dave Hoot Bernardson in Grove Heights. And that's what they were doing with their discipline policy. They had their equity. And so I, I sometimes, you know, I agree absolutely, the, the legal component. But is this, you know, also fair and just in terms of, you know, looking at it beyond just the dominant culture point of view?
And I agree with you Paula, in the sense that, I mean, why do we have a discipline policy? Yes, because we have to, a big part of this is legally required. We, if we want to enforce discipline action, we need to have legal backing that we've stated this is what we're going to do, right? This is all fair, I totally agree with you. There's a big legal component, you want to have this really clean and organized and clear, so people understand. But for me, the also, the, the other why involved is, is what are we trying to achieve with a discipline policy? Hopefully, we're trying to achieve 100% good behavior. You know, like, if in an ideal world, we don't need it, right? And so what components of how we design this policy encourage good behavior? And how might we potentially design it in a way that actually doesn't do that? You know what I'm saying? That's big philosophical, and I get that, but I'm just saying, do those conversations ever happen?
But in my experience, your discipline, your discipline policy does not create good behavior. Your discipline policy is simply there for when the unacceptable, agreed-upon unacceptable behaviors happen. It's, it's the work, it's kind of from the lens that Paula is, is coming from as well. And I think you are too, Sarah, that it's the work in the buildings and creating the culture and climate that facilitates the, whatever we describe as, believe is good behavior or acceptable behavior. That's, that's the work that happens. I don't, I don't know that that's necessarily part of the discipline policy. The discipline policy is that after the fact piece.
Which is, and the elementary, the responsive classroom, at the middle level now, the developmental designs, all of those conversations have been happening, and then at the high school, the bar. The building assets and reducing risks, that's where we're training teachers on positive behavior interventions and teaching kids expectations ahead of time and.
Yeah, and I'm not saying those things aren't happening. I totally get that, 100%, yeah, of course. There's all kinds of great work happening, but I'm, I'm talking about specifically in the design of this document.
What do you mean, like the design?
Like, what, the way we write and lay it out. If someone reads it, do they get a sense that they're empowered to make good decisions? Or do they, or do they get confused and overwhelmed?
This came up, this came up on Monday, and Bob answered it, I thought, and I, I really appreciated this, that, Bob, you were quite frank about it and candid, where you said principals are kind of, well, you said this, I don't mean to all, kind of bet, want, want this to happen. This is kind of, this helps our administration have, have an actual policy that they can go to that is consistent across the board. And I know, I know what you're saying, because it seems a little bit, I, I don't know, aggressive when I first looked at it. But at the same time, I really, my takeaway from that conversation was that Bob said, you know, our principals are kind of begging for this in a way that they, they want to be able to have. I think this helps parents and principals, you know what the line is. So you can correct me if I'm wrong, and then I got my 10-1-1 that I, I don't see my little tweak, so I was going to ask you. It's just the little, the little word that I, just the may, school district policy may mean a student walking versus it just means a student walking to and from school. We taught, we discussed that on Monday.
Yep.
Sometimes those little words can be.
The.
How do you want to change that line?
Well, the point of this is that what is school district property considered? So it, it says also may mean, I felt that that was a little weak. It, you know, just what is it?
Is it or isn't it?
School district property means a student's walking, or is that what you're saying?
Yeah, if that's what you're saying, then just say it. That's kind of, that was my.
And for people that, that's new to, for purposes of discipline and holding students accountable, when, when a student is in the process of walking from their house to the bus stop, from the bus stop to school, from school back home, that is all for purposes of discipline considered an acceptable venue for the student to operate under compliance of what, as if they were in school.
So you just said some of that stuff that really should be reflected in here too? And here it just says to or from school.
It is, and it's in the, it's in the transportation part of it.
Okay.
Yeah. On page eight, just to point out a couple more things. We, at the bottom of page eight starts the removal of student from a class. So twelve, section 12 and on, is where you're going to see some stuff that again, might seem harsh, but it's procedurally coming out of the Fair People Dismissal Act, so that it's in our policy. Because if you're a parent that never has a student, that you need to get the Fair People Dismissal Act that's home to you, you're never going to know that it exists. So remove, this is how students are removed from class. It's expanded to give grounds for removal. And the reason 12-1-2 is there, where it says on page nine, those three things, willful conduct, significant disrupts, willful conduct endangers, willful violation of any school rules, a student needs to violate one or more of those for them to be considered for expulsion. That's again, part of this. Can be.
Leading you to the principal's office.
All-inclusive, yep, yep. It doesn't mean that when you're removed from class, you're automatically getting expelled. But just to point out why they're, why it's in policy.
Do you think parents will understand it to mean that? That it's not just removal from seventh hour, but that it could also?
That's in the definitions on the first and second page, if you read that.
I usually read this a lot harder when it's your committee, it's kind of good.
Yeah.
A lot of people listen to it very slowly.
The, again, the, the hard part with discipline, you're looking at a 19-page document right now, right? And if, unless you read through it 10, 12 times and ask questions, these type of questions are going to come up because you're not going to remember that it was on page two, that this is laid out and it's all connected. But it's late, this is why with statutory ones, we rely on MSBA, because they've got the people that have done.
So is that, that section you're talking about right now, is that from MSBA?
A lot, yep.
How much would you say of that section early period?
Kathy, how much percentage would you say this is MSBA, and how much have we added, if you had to guess?
I would tell you it's probably 85, 90% MSBA. Because I literally took MSBA and set ours aside and went back and revised the MSBA model. And the only, the big, I shouldn't say the only places, the main places where we, it is an MSBA is in these procedures for removal and things, because it says insert district practice. So that's the places where it would be vary from MSBA.
And so what we did with that is we relied on statute and Fair People Dismissal Act, which is what we follow in procedure.
And other school districts.
On page 10, 12-6 and 12-7, we have added verbiage that covers what we already do in practice. So 12-6 is the devices for detecting chemical alcohol while on school premises. We have SROs in schools, we use passive breathalyzer when we think students have been consuming alcohol. 12-6-2, when we suspect that a student is under the influence of a chemical, we take them to the nurse's office and we run them through kind of the typical battery of dilation of pupils, racing of hearts, stuff like that, that nurses know how to do. These are things that we already do. It made sense to put them in the policy, to make it overt for people that we do these things.
Does it have in here that, or maybe this is, be in a different place, that, that you can search? That you can bring in dogs, or you can, is that anywhere, or is that somewhere else?
Search and seizure is a, you have, there's a, what is the, I don't know what the policy, there's a, there's a separate policy on search and seizure, I don't know what the number of it is. Does that answer the question? 12-7 is a statutory requirement that came into play, so that's why 12-7 is there. 12-8 is a statutory requirement, and that's why.
Do you have a question on that?
Yep.
12-8-5, the verb is must have, and that makes sense.
Yep.
12-6 says schools may have. Don't we have in every school either a counselor or an advocate who would intervene and support students early on as behavior concerns are surfacing? It, it struck me as kind of like, well, if we want to have one, we'll have one. It, it almost seems like I might, we do, so why wouldn't we say must have?
Yeah, and every other one says will or must.
My only thought to that would be that by putting must in there, that means that you always will have someone regardless.
Someone assigned.
Assigned.
To intervene. It might be the principal, but you'd like to believe we could keep advocates and.
So it probably makes sense to have may in there. We do it, but by saying must, so again, to the verb part of it, must, then what you're saying is you're always 100% of the time going to have someone assigned to do that.
I agree with you. We are going to say that. I mean, to me, that, well, to me, that's kind of significant if we say, well, we might do it if we run into, to somebody's point earlier, if we run into budgeting problems, we might not. I mean, otherwise, we have somebody, we have an adult in the building, and all we're saying is, if we have a student who's got behavior concerns that are surfacing, you're the buck stops on your desk. I understand why we wouldn't do it, but I'd love to see us do it, and I hope the policy committee talks about it before the next time we meet. I just think it makes sense. By the same token, when I read 12-8-8, it kind of struck me as, that's a nice statement, it doesn't seem to fit here. Is this MSBA? Did they tuck that in there, or?
We took, we took the subpoints of this from other districts that we saw had these in place because the statutory requirement stopped short at saying, you just need to say you have procedures in place.
Well, I like this concept, I just don't know if this is the, I mean, it, I'm reading through and it all seems, you know, chemical health, intervening problems, but schools will have office personnel to engage and support students from all cultural backgrounds. I thought, what does that have to do with? I understand what they may be hinting at, if we have kids who are having difficulties or behavior issues because of their cultural backgrounds and they're getting harassed, you know? Yep, but otherwise, it just kind of.
I don't know, I'm thinking about, George, not because of their cultural backgrounds that they're getting harassed, but if their norms are different than, you know, if you have a student who's new to country and hasn't spent a lot of time in schools, they aren't going to always know what the expectations are. So I see this as, how do we support from a district office staff about working with that principal and that team to make sure they're aware of the background of the student, what they may, may not know, or expectations from parents, those kind of things, not so much. You know, when I, I bring it back to the top up here, when it says attempts to improve a student's behavior, the student doesn't know, or hasn't had the cultural experience of being in our schools, I see it as working with that team to make sure that they have the, the knowledge and the, the background for that student.
So what you said makes sense, is there a way to write this so that it says more what you just said? To me, I think it is a little confusing to figure out what does that actually mean? But what you said was clear.
Yeah, I'm looking at 12.8.2 and 12.8.6 and 12.8.8. And I feel like they're all kind of saying the same thing, and we could actually combine them into making one clear statement that includes all of those ideas. You know, recognizing that people have different cultural backgrounds. A staff would be assigned and report any concerns, or something like that. You know, like, it could be simplified.
So 12, 12-8-2 is parsed out to, to, kind of to the same, individually, to the same, for the same reason when George brought up the may question in 12-8-6. That is specifically calling out that administrator is responsible for adequately supervising that building and utilizing staff to do that. The 12-6 one is about intervention, so a little bit different piece there. Not that you couldn't make it a bigger sentence, but again, what we tried to do in getting rid of paragraphs is to make it easier to read in that. The, what was the other, the 12?
12.8.8 is the question that was raised, I think, that talking specifically about cultural backgrounds. I don't know, I guess I'm, I'm a fan of brevity, so I like fewer words. And I feel like it's a stronger document if we can make it clear and full, fully, fully say everything we need to say, but do it with fewer words, so I'm.
It's yours, it's yours, George.
We've already figured that out.
And provide, for me, having been a principal, from a policy standpoint, it's much easier for me if it's broken out. And I'm not having to read an entire paragraph to get at what I need to get at inside of a policy.
And I think from a legal perspective, the lawyers would want these individual like this so that they can cite to the specific and not have someone say, well, it's contained within this paragraph, so are they referring to this sort of a situation versus outlining exactly how each one is, is set. how each one is set forth? And I think that's kind of why, I'm assuming it was once all lumped together and that's why they parsed it out this way, so that-
Doesn't mean we can't combine a couple, but-
Or, I guess, yeah, I guess the question is, can we, do we need to have them all? I like the format, I agree, it's easier to read, it's easier to follow what we're talking about. Even now, we're saying, let's talk about 12.8.8 or whatever, you know? So we know what we're talking about, we can find it easily. But the question, I guess, remains is do they all have to be here? Is this really, really, absolutely the bare minimum of what we have to have in this? I mean, or can we find places where we can find efficiencies? Like, does that one really make this a stronger policy? Or can we do without it? I guess that's the question.
I think this is possibly one place where, I get what you mean and I appreciate that, Sarah, because I'm the same way, but I think with discipline policy, it's probably one place where you can't have the bare minimum because there's, there's so many nuances that go into this. So the more, as, as sometimes wordy and lengthy and all those pieces that it is, it's with these situations that come up with students, you need to cover every aspect. Because, you know, this is where you're going to be challenged as a board and as administration on discipline policies. And so I would just, normally, I totally agree with you, but this is one area where I think we really need to stick to MSBA and to what our lawyers say as far as supporting. Because when it goes to court, they're going to say, well, you know, what did your lawyers say? What did your, so I, I don't know.
The other thing I would add to that and just remind you, discipline is, is one of the policies where, again, we sat down with this with 12, a committee of 12, to include parents, teachers, administrators, and a student, and went through it line by line and got their input on it. And then we did spend, I don't know, two hours?
Two, two and a half hours.
Working on it as the policy working group as well, to get, and legal, to get to, to get to where we're at with policy, so there's been-
I really don't want to come across as being disrespectful of that process.
That's not my intention, you know? I, I hope that you don't feel that way.
No, I don't feel that way.
I totally respect that amount of time and that effort and absolutely am thankful for that, absolutely. I'm just, you know.
No, I don't take it that way. I just, I'm, I'm just a reminder that it's had tons of eyes, to your que, right? Actually, to your question. Because it's, it's had a ton of eyes on it.
Yeah.
My only fear would be, again, to Denise's point then, is I wouldn't want to, with the discipline policy, make significant changes to what a lot of people have agreed to. But that said, that doesn't mean that we can't take one or two of these and combine them if it makes sense.
Yeah, we're turning it over to the policy working group again, right?
Yeah.
Okay, well, you know our concerns.
I think Denise's point earlier, what I think it's important to remember is two things. Remember, this is the board's, here's what you're going to do, you're going to decide how. So here's the rules, follow administrators, here's how you're going to go do it. And this is kind of to your point about the may question and Denise's point about legal is, remember, if you put it in here and we don't do it, so if you say you must and we don't, and we get into a case and the judge says, well, your policy says you will, but you didn't, so why didn't you now, district, you're at fault because you didn't do what your policy said? That's where the may and the will and the shall becomes a big issue. Because there's a difference between we can have an intervenor or we will have one when you get to court.
That's exactly why I had my little, what was it, 10-11, you know, it was, is it or is it not, walking to school? You know, to say it maybe, well, those are a little bit of weasel words for me, you know? If it is that, then say it, spell it out.
The purpose is to make it clear. So if it's not clear, let's make it clear.
Yeah, and I, I would just say, you know, appreciate all the time and your comments, I truly do. I, I, it's, it is, it's wordy, I agree, but for me, that is where the power lies in the policy, is the amount of work that these people put into this. And I, my, I've gone through many zoning changes in Lake Elmo and this is kind of how we lay out. So for me, this is incredibly easy to read. It just specifies, you know, numbers it. So I, I think it's remarkable work. I mean, so much better than this, what is it, 1984 was the first one, is that right?
Yeah, I think, yep.
Oh, yeah, so, so, I mean, I just look for the ease of that. And really, the power for the public to say, okay, it's spelled out right, right here. And I would err, to Bob's point, I would really err on the side of you can't be too communicative with, with the policy. So I'm really impressed with the work, actually.
So Kathy, to what you just said, do we need to look at how we word 12.8.8? Not just to clarify, but also if we have a principal who's well-trained in how to support students from cultural backgrounds, but does not work with district office personnel because they are trained, could that get somebody in trouble at some point? Does that make sense? If we're saying they will, but they're trained in their building?
So here's where I would see that being a possibility. If we had a cultural issue where a child is behaving in a certain way because it's their cultural background, but it's not the norm in our classrooms, and we didn't, we took action to punish that child, but never did this, yes. If this turned into a bigger case, that's the kind of situation they'd look at.
So I think, so for sure for 12-8.8, I'm going to make a note and we'll work through that one.
12-8.8.
So the way that reads, Kathy, it's got to be a central office, is it?
They want to think conversely.
Well, yeah, 12-8.7 would be the same.
See, what I'm wondering is, it would seem sometimes, depending on what personality you have, you may have somebody in the guidance office.
Well, and you hope you're training your staff to know how to do that, so.
So we'll take both of those bets?
12-8.7, 12-8.8. Did we, did you keep or change George's?
We haven't listed it, oh, I'm sorry, 12-8.6.
12-8.6?
Yes, I have a note.
Who won that battle, the will?
To take back to the committee.
Yeah, it's not that I'm changing that, I want the flexibility of, I mean, that's come up in negotiations as to having, we have to have staff there.
I think George's point was that at least the principal should be assigned to that. Like, that's not saying somebody's going to be in the building every day, all day, but that there is a person assigned.
Yeah, assigned.
Here's the question that I still would have with changing it to will or must is then the follow-up question of assigned. What does assigned mean? Does that mean that we assign Carissa to provide the intervention work for that? And in Carissa's absence, I mean, I don't know that that's, and maybe, so maybe here's the thing we need to talk about, maybe because it's as unclear as it is, maybe we're not ready to have it in the policy altogether.
Or take out assignment and schools must have staff able to intervene and support. And we can say that.
And remember, a lot of the, so for 12-8, everything that's on here, we do it. We have it already in process, it's just calling it out that we do it. Again, so, but if we need to clarify it.
Can we maybe just talk about that in our follow-up meeting? Because I, I read it a little bit differently, so maybe we just have, you know, like, I read it as, you should have a staff assigned to intervene, it doesn't mean they have to be in the building at the time. So I'm just reading it a touch different.
So let's talk through 6, 7, and 8 again.
Yeah, and I think one thing to say about those is that, you know, they're all similar in the structure, so they could all have may, or they could all have will, or they could have must. But it should probably be the same, right? Depending on what we decide we're willing to commit to. And, and what do we want to have to hold ourselves to?
Well, the nice thing is you hit 13, 13 on is all statute. So it's all, how are we actually going to dismiss? And by how are we, I mean everybody, not just Stillwater School. So again, it's statute or Fair People Dismissal Act. It is there to let parents and staff know how we are going to deal with not just regular education students, but also special education students, 504 students with regard to discipline policy and what we're required to do. So with that, and the, oh, the other part is, there was the question about student privacy. So on page 17, on page 17, number 15, it falls under student discipline records. It actually, 15-2 is what addresses, "Collection, dissemination, and maintenance of student discipline records and information shall be consistent with applicable school district policies and federal and state law." That's where in this policy it lives that will follow all other data privacy pieces. And then we're going to keep, on the last page, on page 18, review of the policy, it'll be an annual review. So that's the policy work. What are we doing here? I lost it. All right. So just so that, as you take this with you, you don't get confused, is what we're doing. All right? So a couple of things to keep in mind as you look at this matrix. This is something that I am working on with our building administrators. We've already started the process. The reason for this is, one, down the left-hand side, you see that we have all those things that students can get in trouble for, let's just call it that, behaviors. The definitions, what we don't have currently is a consistent model to respond developmentally to the age of the student. So what you'll see that we've added in this document is, again, we'll just use abuse as the, the piece in this matrix. We, we're going to, we're parsing this out, kids' grades 3 through 5, 6 through 12, 9 through 12, and then added also pre-K through school-age care. Because we have issues that happen in our preschool classroom and we have issues that happen in before and after-school care. And we're constantly in those issues going, okay, how are we going to deal with this? What is, what's it applied to? So what we've done is we have an elementary administrative team, we have our middle school administrative team, and we have our high school administrative team that are working on what is an appropriate consequence? What is something that we can live with that in a typical situation, on the first offense, I'm fairly certain that Kathy's going to use the same consequence that I'm going to use for that behavior? Now, what happens typically is people go, well, yeah, what if? Because context is everything, right? So if you read the majority of the second half of the paragraph, that explains that while these are laid out in matrix form, basically, it says context matters, the severity of the incident, where it happens, who did it happen to? Am I a student that this, I'm in trouble doing tons of other stuff? An administrator has the latitude to either increase the consequence or decrease the consequence depending upon the situation, which is the latitude we want with our principals. However, for parents, this becomes a great document for administrators to work with because what, what we call it is the going rate, right? So, you know, for pulling a false alarm in a building, we don't have much of that anymore, but pulling a false alarm for the first time, the going rate is going to be X. The third time you do it, it's going to be X, depending, right?
And that's what I'm going to do, like, in this factory.
Yep, so what's going to happen when we're finished is you're going to be able to go all the way across and be able to see that depending upon the age level, inside of an offense, you're going to see the differences all the way from a star, which is going to mean the administrator has the ability to choose whatever they want to choose in that situation, to all the way up to and including expulsion, right? Because you bring a weapon to school, you're getting expelled because of state law.
Kathy, that's a quick question. So it has reporting code written on here?
Yep.
And then it has those grades?
Yep.
And sit out, so does that mean that there will be a different reporting code for abuse for that age?
So, nope, so what happens, the reason we're adding reporting codes in there is the last step in this process, this goes back to the consistency in our student information system, right? We're going to assign, in Skyward, every offense has a number attached to it. So we are going to put the corresponding number in here so that every administrator in the district, if they assign abuse to this, to whatever the situation was, they're going to use the same code whether I was in Lake Elmo, or I was at Stillwater Junior, or I was wherever. So when we're reported out, it gets reported out as abuse is abuse is abuse based on our discipline.
It's by category.
No, the code does not, the coding doesn't, it doesn't pay, the reporting system does not care what age. They care-
So even though it says reporting code and then you have all the different age groups in there, it'll be the same number?
The reporting code is in the box with the definition only, and then the other ones are in a separate line. So that code goes with the, each definition-
So a code will be replacing the words reporting code?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
No, there'll be a code put next to it. So it'll say reporting code-
Oh, I see, and a mover, okay, got it, got it.
So is this like K-12, like this is your pre-K 12?
Pre-K 21, yep. Yep, so when we're done with this, we, we should have a comprehensive for, not just, well, for administrators to consistently implement discipline, which is what they're asking for. For teachers to be able to see, all right, if I have a disruptive student, this is what I'm pretty sure is happening. It's for parents to be able to see, what works out great for parents is if you're a, if you're a administrator working with parents and you've got a student, you're able to lay out and say, this is the first time you've done this. This is all we're doing. Understand that if it continues to happen, this is what we're looking at. It's an opportunity and a way to help parents take that home and be supportive of what we're trying to do to change behavior.
So what about if the second grade they do it, and the fifth grade? Is it then still first and second offense, or?
Nope, you cannot carry over unless you have a chronically, under law, unless you have a chronically behaviorally challenged student, I'll have it that way. You don't use year-to-year data to assign consequences for the following year.
Fresh start.
Yep, you get a fresh start every year. So that's what this will end up being. You'll notice we've also added in the back, specific to transportation. Because we have, we have stuff that happens on buses that principals and administrators need something quick to go to to say, okay, what are we doing in this incident?
Bus drivers get a chance to go through that and comment, or the bus manager, whatever it's called?
We did not do that. We took this from another district's layout with that. But in my, in looking at them, they're fairly, these are the behaviors you deal with as a, as a administrator and bus driver.
Especially, no, that's cool.
The, the language for the harassment section, I think it's number 35, and I can send this, but I think there's some language there that's old, out-of-date language maybe, and some, there may be some better, I mean, I think getting at the same thing, but there may be some better terminology for that. But I'll send that to the policy working group or whoever gets it.
Is there something specific you're thinking, George, in that?
Well, sex and gender, I think it's being used a lot more. It's got color, but I think a lot of the updated ones just say physical appearance and not color. I've seen a number of them that have home or first language. They aren't going to be harassed based on their home language or their first language. There's kind of a bias, I think, with the very last one, the public assistance status rather than socioeconomic status. I think rich kids can be harassed as much as poor kids. So I think socioeconomic is broader than public assistance status. That was just, when I read through that, that was just my thought, some of them may be better. I like the idea of it, I think it's great, but I just thought some of the terminology.
Maybe adding gender identity too.
We also talked about, this might be helpful or not, but we, we talked about some of the communications that, and Bob, can you help me, correct me if this is wrong, but some of the communication that comes out from the principals, sometimes they can or used to be in their own buildings a little bit more strict per se based on their individual building. Remember, do we talked about, because I remember seeing a few emails and I had asked about it and I think it was, there were some situations in some of the schools where they were a little bit more persistent in a couple of them than other schools. And the principal has, or do they not have a right to kind of send out communication or notification that we've got a problem that we have to send out to our schools? Is that something that?
I'm not quite sure I understand what you're asking.
Well, I'm just trying to find- Well, I'm just trying to find a way to word it the right way. I have received in the past emails highlighting specific body parts or whatever that are exposed that may or may not have been in the policy, but that, and maybe they weren't even in the policy, but that have been an issue at the schools. And a couple, and many people, for whatever reason, have asked me about that. Do principals get, are they allowed to just send out emails to that? I'm sure they are, but I mean, like, how does that happen? Do, is it because there's a persistent problem in the school? And that, and that's kind of under their purview that they, that they can do that? They're just highlighting?
Dress code?
Yeah, well, dress code and that kind of thing, not, not discipline, but just more dress code type of things. And I really have never actually known how to answer that question. So I just, I thought I would ask.
I guess the, I mean, it's not necessarily, the only way that that specific situation is related to discipline policy in particular here would be, you've got, you've got lack of attire could be possible, you've got lewd, something that's lewd, suggestive, or inappropriate based on what's on it. But, you know, the bigger issue is, we pay our principals to manage their buildings, right? And so the principal has a great deal of latitude in a building to manage and communicate. In fact, that's part of their competency that they're, that they're evaluated on, is their ability to communicate effectively and work with parents. And part of that is, and I've been in buildings where there's, there are years where things happen where, you know what, it's time that we send this out, and as an administrative team, and as a counseling team, and as a teacher group, we've had enough of this. And it's time to let parents know that here's what we're doing. And it would be unique only to that building because the other building may not be experiencing.
Yeah, I think that was, and it wasn't, it was, it wasn't a criticism at all. It was more of, oh, that's interesting. I didn't know that. It was one, you know, one of those kind of things. And, you know, is that what they do? I'm like, I honestly don't, I don't know. So.
I mean.
It's good, no, that's good. It's good.
Some of us were on the board when a kid got in trouble, and I think the story was he had fishing gear in his trunk. He had a fillet knife in his trunk. He did something stupid in school, and an assistant principal took him out to the trunk. I'm going to search your car. Opened up the trunk, found the knife, and it went from lippenoff to a teacher to the kid got suspended for X number of days. Is that what this possession thing where it says any knife, is that still, the kid gets in trouble if he's got a fillet knife in his?
So that, that situation has a ton of layers to it. The, that gets into search and seizure and whether it was appropriate to even go out to the car and search and all that.
That's where it went.
And who has, and was their probable cause and all that kind of stuff. Typically, the way that that's handled with, outside of that situation is if, most principals handle it in the way that if, if a student realizes they have something that is, that they're not supposed to have, let's say it's the fillet knife because they were fishing. The expectation is that they bring it to the office and say, what do you want me to do with this? That's what most principals will lay out at the beginning of the year with all. Now, in operation from, in operation or an administrative procedure, again, depending upon what's going on in the context, the very, on the face, if a student has a knife but hasn't brandished it to anyone, that's a different story than if a student has a knife and brandishes it to someone. It's different from a student has a knife and threatens someone with it. Those would be three entirely different situations going on.
So I have just a couple of things I want to bring up. One is if we can talk about whether we should have in there that if a student is sent to the principal's office for behavior, that parents will be notified? Because I think that's kind of what I was alluding to before, that sometimes parents don't know their own child is sent to the principal's office, and I think it'd be good to have notification.
So I think the thing to understand would be, depending upon the day, depending upon what's going on, the sheer amount of volume that that could be if you do a must. The other thing is, what are we going to qualify as a, as a student getting sent to the office? There are many times that students get sent to the office that the principal and whoever sent them to the office, because it's not necessarily just coming from a classroom, got sent to the office because the person who sent them there thought that this was an office referral type event, when it really wasn't. So based on putting that in policy, just because a kid got sent to the office would mean that that principal would be calling you. And so if you think through that phone call, Kathy, your son got sent to the office. So, but I hear what you're saying in terms of when you get notified. The majority of our principals, based on what in my conversations with them, is if a student is sent to the office and it's a disciplinary matter, there's a phone call that goes home.
Maybe that becomes in your procedures, because I don't think that's always the practice. And I think.
Without specific examples, I, it would, and knowing context and knowing the degree to which that happens?
Well, and I, I mean, just for an example, I know that there was an incident where something happened on the playground, a bunch of kids were sent in, and then they were, they couldn't resist the rest of the week. That's the kind of thing, I think, as parents, we should know that that's happened. And so I don't know how you qualify it, but it's important, but I think something like that.
Well, I would disagree with that.
And my other thing was just a comment that I was thinking about when I went to your superintendent's advisory with the students, and they, many of them said, we want a safe place where we can talk about hard issues. And I don't know if they would take some of these things as that they couldn't talk about hard issues because it could be assumed that they were engaging in this behavior, even though they might be asking questions for understanding, or, I don't know if I can even explain it. Like, you know, we, if you look at a national level, like, we, there's so many conversations that are ugly, and these kids want to have the conversation in a, in a safe place where they can bring up their thoughts and feelings but not appear to be, I mean, they're, I don't think their intent would be to bully or harass, but they want to understand. But could there, could it be interpreted as that they are engaging in this when they just really are trying to have a hard conversation? And we heard it from several of the kids that day, that they want a safe place where they can talk about these things without it being that they're, that they're trying, do you understand what I'm?
I feel like, well, I think, I guess there's some of both. I was feeling that they, their comments were actually more, more with their peers about, because remember, there are a couple that were kind of getting into it about perspective.
And that's, I mean, that's an example that I think, and that's what I mean, like, I don't.
I've never seen that come forward, Shelley, as a, as a discipline problem, other than if kids, I think that comes to the, the cultural piece some about understanding differences and differences of opinion and that kind of thing. I don't think that would be an administrator, a teacher saying, no, you can't, I mean, I don't know how you put that into policy.
Right, well, and that, I mean, and I don't either. That was just my thought, and I thought of that instance where, you know, it was a student trying to understand, but it was interpreted differently from another student. And, and could that squelch what these kids want, to just have this open conversation about how to navigate the world we live in?
I don't, I, I don't, I don't think I have concern about that. I hear what they're saying about wanting more space to have conversation and having teachers help facilitate that and have, you know, be able to have time for that, but I don't see that as part of this. But I think it's a good thing to be thinking about.
I just don't want kids to feel like they can't talk because they're going to be, you know, somebody's going to say, well, you're being hateful or whatever.
But I think that's where this comes in line with responsive classroom developmental designs, with VAR, with, with what we're doing with students is to, on the, on the other side of this, help them build skill in how and when it's appropriate to have those conversations, and also being aware of when it looks like someone is receiving what you're saying in a way that you didn't intend to do.
And what the kids were really asking for were teachers who were willing to allow that conversation and be the facilitators and really help them to have those conversations without misperceptions and confusion happening.
So if we've got things, send them to whom?
Send them to Kathy, because she is currently holding on to the official electronic version of changes.
I forget, did we have another meeting on the books, policies here?
I don't know, we haven't gotten there, but the one thing we did, we're going to focus on providing a variety of different dates. So we're going to do, I, I'm hoping that it's not going to be so rough. We had a lot of challenges with a couple of vacations and whatnot, so, yeah, so that's a good question though. So time-wise, when do we need to do that?
I'll probably try to connect with you, so I can get something scheduled like that week of the nineteenth, or the week before.
And you should try to get three different options, maybe? Okay.
All righty. Next one is the special education workload policy, first reading.
Well, thank you. If you could turn to statutory requirement, SR 1.27. And what, and what you have there in front of you is the MSBA model policy regarding this statutory requirement. And what I'd like to note just upfront is that this is a new, a new requirement, so it's not a revision of something we've had in the past with that. So what I'd like to do is just kind of overview, it, it's much shorter and a little bit more to the point, but overview it, what's here, and then I'll make a few comments about a little bit of the process that we did to review the policy, and then certainly open it up to any questions that you might have as you consider the wording in of this policy. So to get started, the, the policy, what it really focuses on is establishing the general parameters for determining workload limits for teachers that, in the special education department. And what's, what's important to note is that this is really relevant to teachers when they're teaching students that receive less than sixty percent of their day in direct special ed instruction. So we often talk about students that are in setting one, two, and three, and this is, this is about establishing the parameters for students, well, for the teachers that instruct students that are within that setting one and two. So setting one is up to twenty percent of their day, forty percent of their day, and then up to sixty percent of the day. So just for clarification, the students that we have that are in our, in our site-based programs, which we consider setting three, their caseloads are established by statutory requirements, and we already have that in, in, in the statutes regarding how we, how we establish the caseloads for those teachers and their workload. So what the, what the policy does is it, it first starts on number two, is walks through some definitions of who is a special education teacher. And it's really about any teacher or any licensed staff that provides instruction to children with disabilities. The second one is around what direct services is. And when we talk about direct services, that's when a teacher is actually giving direct instruction to the student or to a small group of students. Indirect services are all those things that are a requirement for providing educational services to students that, but that might not be direct instructional services to the student. So there are things like, we talk about the paperwork load, the writing IEPs, the consultation with, with the general education staff, the planning, working with materials and assistive technology, and all those other duties that a staff member has. Those are considered indirect services. And then the workload is really defined as all the total minutes that a teacher has that are required to meet the due process responsibilities, including direct and indirect services, evaluation and reevaluation of students with disabilities, and the management of individualized education plans or programs. And then some of those other, other little pieces of, sometimes not little, but travel time, parent contact, and all those non-direct service times. So that's what they mean by workload. So in, in number three, what it, what the policy states is that the workload limits shall be determined by the appropriate special education administrator in consultation, which is important, with building principal and the superintendent. And if you flip over to the number four, it talks about in determining the workload limits for a special education staff, the school district shall take into consideration the following factors: student contact minutes, evaluation and reevaluation time, indirect services, management of IEPs, travel time, and other services required in the IEPs of eligible students. So that's the, the main highlights of the policy. What I would like to share as far as a little bit of process, we, I did have an opportunity to share the policy with our special education advisory team, which has our, kind of our coaches from all of our buildings, and got some of their input on this. Their, their basic input was, one is how do we define special education teacher, and does that include speech-language pathologists, school psychologists, and those pieces? I do believe that the way this is written, it does talk about all licensed special ed staff, all those people, as I mentioned, are licensed special education staff. So when they have responsibilities that are, you know, especially like our speech pathologists, they do provide direct instruction to students and, and meet the IEP goals and objectives of those. So I do believe this, those, what we call related service staff, fit under this, this policy as well. As far as when we determine their workload, we should be looking at this policy as the background or the foundation for how we design that workload for those, those staff members as well. The other input that they provided was a little bit on the indirect services, and what they shared was really sharing more of additional duties that aren't necessarily listed here. But I don't believe that the MSBA policy was meant to be all-inclusive. It, it, it talks about, like, all, all the different requirements of the teaching. So again, I think that they felt like that, they understood that, that, you know, it was more of an opportunity to say, well, we, we do a lot of other things like professional development and curriculum development and those sort of things. And I do think that most of, well, all of those things are captured within indirect services with them. And that was kind of their, you know, their main input. And I, one of the things that we talked about, and I think Bob referenced and Kathy referenced too, is when we really talked about this policy as the, as the what, that it establishes this is the parameters and what our work will be, which they got much more energized about, was once this is established, we'll then go back as an advisory team, look at how we do our staffing practices, how we design our workloads, and make sure that they're aligned with these pieces. And I do believe, then through our, the study that we're working on, that there are some opportunities, opportunities for us to look at some different models in the way in which we do, we do staffing for, and making sure we have workable and manageable workloads for, for all of our teaching staff. So I think this, this does provide us that kind of overall guidance, which says you have, you know, you really need to look at that indirect services, those, those other core responsibilities when you're making decisions about overall workload. So I think there's some good opportunities there.
So this is new statutory requirement?
Correct.
That wasn't the script?
This is MSBA language then, is that basically what we took?
This is straight MSBA.
Yep.
This is a policy that we actually are behind in getting. We should have had this policy over a year ago, so we're catching up this. So it's new a while ago. We're behind.
So it wasn't the most recent section?
No, no.
Paul, when you said paperwork load is example under the indirect services, is that correct? Or did I just write that down because I'm tired and everything? Is that right?
Yeah, yep, yes, it.
Progress reviews.
Yeah, so that, I just remember that being a discussion piece and, or an issue, and here and there I heard that, and I was just wondering if that is included in this 2.3.1?
It, it's, it's more included in 2.4.1.
Okay.
Under that workload piece where it specifically says management of individualized education programs.
Okay, so paperwork load it would be, is more under that. Okay.
And we tried to address that too, Jen, by the due process areas?
Yeah.
Putting those in place. And I know that we've had some feedback that some are more effective than others, so I think we need to keep looking at, you know, who, who's most effective and how that's being a support, because if you aren't effective, it's not, then it's. it's not. But we've had good feedback from the ones that are trained well, or have had the experience, and so I think Paul will have a handle on that, about who would need extra training, but that, we have gotten good feedback that that has helped tremendously on the paperwork.
And then, so this is kind of like an umbrella-type piece, and then from here, then you can get into kind of the more details that you were discussing.
Right.
That's great, thank you.
How, can I just ask, how does this change, like, what are the biggest things that are different with this policy in place than what we have been doing?
I think, I think what we have been doing fits nicely under this policy. We would be consistent and within the policy parameters with what our current staffing practices are.
We just didn't have a policy where it was defined.
Right.
Is that right?
Right.
Although this is kind of a baseline.
Yeah.
Because I may, as an employee, say, "You know what, I'm way over this."
Well, there's nothing in here that defines our-
Yeah, it seems weird that there isn't more specific.
It's just saying there will be a plan, so that's, that's the procedural stuff, right, that you will develop.
So Paul has a model that he has used for special ed staffing, that's not gonna change? He, he already considers all these things when he does that model, but this will be used probably as a basis for part of your conversations when you go back to have further conversations about it.
Right, right.
There's, there's been a model that says, "This many kids with this specific disability equates to this much time." That's, that's there, we've been doing that.
So Kathy, then, does that become part of the administrative procedures?
No, not in this one, no. It's just a managerial practice.
Can you speculate why in 2.4.1 parental contact is called out, and in 4 it isn't? I would think that'd be a big piece of the special ed teacher's work compared to a regular ed teacher.
I don't know, I, I think the only thing I could say, I'm not sure, because there's actually three P'd, and there's a couple places in here where they kind of talk about the same type of indirect or other responsibilities. It might fall under that last sentence or the last kind of line, "Other services required in the IEPs of eligible students," which parent contact is a requirement, depending on how the IEP is written.
Okay, so this doesn't speak to, this is kind of the general framework, but in terms of the, what those caseload ratios look like, that's-
Right.
-addressed here, where it says it'll be determined by the appropriate special education administrator in consultation with the building principal and the superintendent.
So there were, you know, in these policies that mandate that, typically they're mandated because there's a number of districts who don't have a process in place, and so that bubbles up, right? This is like, well, we talked in the discipline policy, we already have a process in place that already is in line, we just didn't have the policy that's been required for a year to be on the books establishing that.
So I have a question about what George just brought up about 2.4.1 and 4, is it redundant that it lists everything both times?
Remember, 2 is just definitions, right?
So do we need 4, or do we need, do we need the workload definition if it spells it out in 4? You know, and I, it just feels like we're listing the same exact things twice.
What I would say, not being a special ed expert, this is MSBA policy, and I believe there's probably a reason they put it in there. This really is just to tell you what workload means, this is saying, "You're gonna think about it when you create your caseloads."
Take into consideration, yeah.
And then my other question was just a formatting question. If we have just one bullet under something, do we need to make, can't that just be part of, like, 2.1, do we need a 2.1, or can we just make the definition in 2.1? Do you get what I'm asking? It just feels like since there's only one bullet, that maybe we don't need that?
Yeah, this is just a format that we've been using, partially because now you don't have to read through the whole, a paragraph to find the definition, it's not buried in, it's clear.
And this one comes in at July 27th for the second reading.
Yep, same process, if you have thoughts, send them to me, I can work with Paul if there's something you need to talk about.
Yeah, right?
Alrighty, anybody briefly want to comment? Thank you. Briefly want to comment on working group reports, personnel that meet? Going once?
Well, should I bring up the, our meeting on Monday with-
Briefly, yep.
Emphasis on, it hurts a little bit.
No, it's not meant to.
I, we just had a, we just had a very nice visit from a student who came in and wanted to kind of discuss her perspective from the LG, LBGT community.
A what?
And just really a wonderful, wonderful kid, and she just kind of experienced some of the, from a policy perspective, you know, she would like us to be cognizant of some of the needs of some of these kids, and how, how certain things can lead to the, a feeling of bullying and harassment, and providing opportunity, and kind of talking, talking earlier about a safe place, you know, restrooms, and we kind of, she just kind of explained her perspective, and we basically, she spoke for about 35 minutes or so, and we just kind of listened, and I felt like it was very informative, very well-spoken, and I think we kind of left it where this is a very large topic that we will kind of look into over the next year type of thing, so, that's it.
Thank you.
I just have one, the finance and operations group, we're asking for a closed session on July 13th as part of our board meeting, we're gonna, Kristen is gonna give us an update on the transportation termini.
Okay. Any future topics?
Before you get there, 916 had a retreat yesterday, and a couple things, very quickly. One, 10 kilo, I think last time I had told you that they were operating a little bit in a deficit, and that they were comfortable with that because they compared it to Colonel Blue. At that time, they had 55 students, in two weeks, they're up to 70, wow. They'll meet their mark if they pick up another 10 kids, which is pretty likely. So I'm just saying, that came out kind of probably predicted, actually in shorter time. Now, part of that, that's gonna become very, very relevant, and some administrators may know that, is there are real concerns about the growing population, especially this special ed kids that they have, and the huge cost of that as well. So that, expect more details. But one of the interesting things that they did yesterday, and they showed, is they have a Lumen influence at Skyward, and what it allows them to do is to feed data into the system, because they can create basically their own variables. And so what they do on all of their discipline issues that come up, or actions, particularly at Colonel Blue, is they label things like the time of the day it occurred, where it occurred, I'm trying to think some of the others, but it was extremely fascinating, the month, the day of the month, and everything else, and it's a pretty fascinating-
We do that.
Yeah, they actually came here for training with that, like, John Barry and Bob's team.
And, and they mentioned John, and said that they had helped with it, and it's a pretty fascinating system, so.
And offering for future topics, I've received many requests, people wanting to know this kind of update on lawsuits, on district spending related to the lawsuits, I don't know if that, and I know we used to do that, so, I don't know if the update maybe at the next board meeting.
I have a request, and I don't know if this needs to go over what it needs, but I, I would like to make a request that we have a discussion, you know, given, you know, we've got financial constraints, but I would like to make a request that we have at least a future discussion, near-future discussion, on what it would need look like to have a fourth grade orchestra start, given the fact that Moundsview, Owatonna, South Wash, Roseville, and Minnetonka all have fourth grade starts in orchestra, and it's, it's, the fact that we're going to K5, that gives kids one year to start, and, and it's crucial in that first and second year that they have the opportunity to decide if they like that instrument, and so those two years are so crucial to have in elementary school, and now that we've changed, I know we've got financial parameters, and I'm, I, I don't need to sell it at that point, but I'm just asking for a discussion on it.
Okay, I think on both of those, according to this, if the addition of the topic is supported by a majority of board members, we'll put it on a future meeting. Anybody have a problem with either one of those two?
That'd be a great conversation, I'd love that.
Put it on a future board meeting.
I have a question, are we getting some more information, sorry, on the special ed report? When are we getting that follow-up? I thought we were getting it tonight, so I was like, wait a second.
I haven't received the final.
Oh, yeah, we just received the final report.
Just earlier this week.
Okay.
So the original plan was to have a business meeting, I think it still needs to be planned, I don't know if that-
I think it's on our draft for-
Will there be something we have to vote on then, or?
No. But at a business room. When we back in, when we have, because our, our intent was, I think, to keep the July board meeting kind of short, but it's gonna be long, because we have plenty of things already on that retreat day, but to have it like the first week of August, and then it'll be at City Hall and be publicized.
All right, I guess we're done.